Call to order. The spring, spring has sprung. Town meeting of Wakefield. Uh, we're gonna kick things off with the pledge of allegiance led by our town clerk, Betsy Sheeran.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands one nation, united.
Uh, next is the return of service. I, Constable Christian K. Loeb, hereby certify that I posted the annual town election, annual meeting warrant of April 23rd, 2024, and April 29th, 2004 on 4/9/24. There's the warrant. We'll enter that in two. All right. What we're gonna do is we're gonna start off with the Dan Sherman presentation of how much money we have, don't have, or might have. Dan, you are up.
Question one, two? Ah, there we go. So, good evening, everybody. As I've done in the past, so we'll just do a run through on our financial conditions. So, I start with the receipts. Through 2023, you'll see our state aid runs at about, um, total of, uh, about 10% of our total budget, not a big number. Tax levy is, is our, our biggest input, and it's up to almost 80% of our total income for the year. Local receipts is also around 10%. And, um, other stuff, uh, little noise, um, is quite small, uh, comes in. So, the dominant piece here, obviously, is the tax levy. And the good news on that is, um, that is pretty steady, whereas the state receipts can go up and down, as you see in the chart in, in, uh, purple. So, um, there's where our sources of income to cover what we're gonna vote to spend this evening. In terms of local receipts, um, motor vehicle excise taxes is the biggest piece. It's the bottom, uh, blue bar. Uh, that has been pretty steady for the last six or seven years. Um, other items have pushed it up, um, to a total now is roughly $9 million in my forecast. I'm adding about 3% to that figure for 24, and again, for 25, um, a 3% inflation, um, on those items. As everybody knows, um, motor vehicles are more expensive, so the excise tax clearly goes up along with, um, other things. Um, licenses and permit fees are, are up substantially, um, and I expect that to, to State aid is tracking about $12 million. We finally got above where we were way back in 2001, where we were about $11 million, and then it dropped off. And for those of you who've been here for many years, you know that in 2009, 2010, 2011, when state aid was cut, it made things very difficult, uh, for all of us. We had to cut a number of programs. We had to cut, um, some people, um, and it was some tough times. Finally, the state's starting to pick it up, and now we're over $12 million, um, and the expectation for '25 is that it will continue, um, to increase. Our stabilization fund, this is our rainy day fund, if you will, um, so it's tracking, uh, pretty steady at roughly at, at $2 million, uh, or about $2 million is where we are now, and as a balance, um, is just, I'm sorry, the balance is at $3 million, is a percentage of our total budget, it's about 3%. And, uh, that 3% is an important figure because both the finance committee and town councils have a policy, and Steve also has the same policy, that we want our reserves to be about 10% of our total spend. Um, so this stabilization fund is one aspect of that reserve, and it's coming at roughly 3% of our budget. The other big pieces are free cash. At the end of, uh, June 30th of 2023, our free cash, uh, was about $8 million, um, and as a percentage of budget, just over 8%. However, in the fall town meeting, we spent about 1.5 million, so the free cash took a bit of a drop at that point, and today it's roughly at 7% of the total, um, budget. And combined with the stabilization at 3%, we're at about 10%, so we're probably really close to our current, uh, policy limit of a 10% available funds in case of any kind of emergency. So the budgets, uh, over the past five years, you see the schools, um, have an average, uh, 4.4% per year over the five-year period, uh, fire at 4.8, library 3.2, and on down. Um, total for those departments is at, uh, $78 million for fiscal year '24. So in total, we've been averaging about 4.4% increase per year, um, on those, um, larger budgets. For, for fiscal year '25, uh, we're about 20, 10.6% in reserves versus our budget goal of 10%, so slightly above. Um, we have enhanced the number of services because of COVID-19, and many of those are staying. Uh, we haven't really cut back on, on anything, um, regarding, uh, the additional people or services under COVID-19. We have about $80 million in capital projects that's in front of us. We are not going to spend anywhere near that. Tonight, we'll discuss, uh, for fiscal year '25, a capital budget of roughly $2 million, and I expect that to go forward, but we have some big items that we keep pushing out, um, into the, into the future. Revenue from hotels and meals taxes is back to our normal, roughly, uh, a million dollars, actually above normal, uh, $1 million a year, and we expect that to continue. And as everybody knows, winters have been pretty easy on us these, the last few years, so our snow and ice overdraft, uh, is again zero, it's been zero, what, uh, three or four years in a row now, I think. Uh, we haven't been spending much money on that, so that's good. So for fiscal year '25, what we have, uh, in front of us is outstanding debt and interest payments. This is our mortgage. So we've got roughly $79 million, uh, for public safety building, the Greenwood, Recreation, Galvin, Walton Roads, Drainage, et cetera. So that's out there, so we're paying that down, um, year by year, slowly. Retirement has an unfunded liability of roughly $52 million. We have OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. Principally, it is retiree medical costs. The medical costs, um, are run through, uh, a fund, and that unfunded liability is at $55.5 million. And so our total mortgage, if you will, is $187 million that we're slowly, um, knocking down, year by year, piece here and a piece there, but, um, we're making, trying to make some progress. Revenues. So what we have available to spend for fiscal year '25, this is our best estimate, um, we know we've got a tax levy of $3.6 million in increase, roughly 4.1%, and that's gonna total about $88 million, and includes 1.4 million in new growth. Um, I keep bugging Victor, give me some new numbers, Victor, help me out, um, but, um, he's, he keeps it pretty close to the vest, and, uh, we'll find out what the real new, new growth number is at, at a later date. Increase of state aid is roughly $534,000. I expect a local receipts increase of about $284,000. We will need to use some free cash to balance our budget. Um, the light department gives us about, um, $974,000 for the use of, of the poles in lieu of taxes. We're gonna have available funds, withdrawal of $282, um, deck, there's a library fund, uh, there's perpetual care funds, there's other, um, small funds that provide, um, $282,000 is our expectation. So our total revenues, uh, all in, expect to be $117.3 million. So, and that represents 4.9 million or 4.4%. So, spending. Uh, we are having a, a significant increase in spending and salaries, 3.126, um, and we also have articles 13 and 14 that are coming up, um, today and Thursday, um, that will increase that, that amount, so it's, it's, right now, it's an old number. Uh, 444 for retirement, uh, 655 for healthcare, Medicare $69,000, vocational schools 306. The big increase in the vocational schools, of course, as everybody knows, is the Northeast Vocational Tech. We got, um, one bill from them, this for '25, it's a significant increase, but '26 and '27 are gonna be the big ones because they're bonding it in stages, as we're going to do with the high school. We're, we're not, not bonding everything all at once, we're just bonding it as we need the cash. And so I expect that 306 will be even higher, uh, for '26 and '27. So we've also decreased some light items, um, because we are finding that we're coming up a little bit short. Capital is down to 188 from the previous year. Um, the OPEB contribution was 1.4 million. You'll see that we're gonna put in, um, 1 million this year, um, in, in a, uh, this year's budget. And the stabilization count, we put in 100,000 last year, this year, we're having zero. If we have a good year and fall town meeting, we determine that our numbers are really good, um, then we will, uh, look at stabilization and the OPEB and probably give those bumps, um, but that's something for fall town meeting, where we know information. Total, uh, department budgets increasing, uh, the almost $5 million, a 6.2%. Schools, as you'll hear, is 5.5, uh, police, fire, fire is 11, DPW is 3.6, the library is 5.1. So fiscal year '25, total budget expenses right now is looking at, uh, for '24 is 112 million, the proposed for '25 is 118,569. Uh, total increase, 6228, or a 5.5% increase. Our total revenue, as I said before, is 117 and change, and the difference of about $1.3 million, we'll have to take out of free cash. So we're, we don't have a balanced budget, so we're gonna have to tap into free cash, uh, to cover that shortfall. Challenges, um, some of these are repeats, you've seen them before, uh, building maintenance, energy costs, uh, maintenance of roads. We did do a road bond, and, and that's helping. I mean, there's a lot going on, as everybody knows. We still got some work to do on stormwater, uh, we still have capital projects, and, um, maintaining our 10% reserves is gonna be a real challenge, as you'll see here in a second. So in terms of forecast, where are we going forward? Uh, free cash, we expect about $1 million to come back for fiscal year '24, um, principally from the healthcare budget, uh, but our deficit spending, um, this year is gonna be at 1.7 million, uh, for the, I'm sorry, for the following years, 1.7 million, and then 2.7 million per year going forward, and we will run out of free cash in fiscal year '32 based on these projections. Uh, what's gonna happen is our, our reserves are gonna drop below the 10% bogey, um, so there's changes to our, in the offing. We're gonna have to make some serious changes going forward. Some of these budgets, um, are not gonna see the same kind of increases that you're gonna be voting, uh, tonight. So what I did then was throw together my forecast on expenditures and income, and you'll see that there's, uh, deficits all the way out to 2034. Uh, the increase in costs, uh, total cost for '25 is at 5.54%, whereas our income is 4.4. That's our 1.3 million, 1.4 million dollar shortfall, um, and then it, they both run at about 4%. So we need to get, um, beyond '25, we need to get down to that, that 4% spot, otherwise, uh, we'll be running out of cash, uh, our reserves will be depleted. So there's some changes afoot. So with that, Mr. Moderator, is the financial forecast.
Thank you, Dan. Everybody reach into your pocket and turn your little sound devices off on your phone, just to be polite to others. Uh, you folks on the side have to sit down. You two, all of you, you have to sit down. Let's go. While we're, don't hold the meeting up, your vote won't be counted, and, uh, you don't wanna be escorted out by a policeman to watch at home. Uh, plenty of good seats down front, look, comfy and a great view, look, Jonathan's waving you down. Um, yeah, out of town. Anyone who is not a registered voter in Wakefield and doesn't have a yellow, little yellow slip, raise your hand. You need, you folks need to be over here. You need to sit near Sherri Dalton, she's the power behind the throne. Oh, oh, are you guys, are you got, if you're a town official, any, who, who over here is not a town official, raise their hand. Out of towners over here, raise your hand. You gotta come over here. What? Well, okay, all right, okay. All right, so that's where the town official types. Any, any random rogue out of towners who need to be over here, okay? How's that? All right? Um, the first article, Mr. Mayo, is the consent agenda. Now, I know everybody's got some plans and motions, et cetera, et cetera, but, yeah, keep moving there, folks, we need you to sit down. Um, the first article is the consent agenda, which we have been using for, I don't know, five, six years now. What that is, is there are one, two, three, four, five articles, which nobody ever discusses. They're, you know, $1 for eminent domain for parking, there's nothing controversial. So just take a minute and look, three, four, five, six, and seven in your booklet, okay?
Can I have that mic on? Hello, thank you. I'm, I'm, in your book, it's in the front of the book, Consent Agenda, you need to cross out Article 13. That's not part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
The book was printed before we, um, we settled that contract, so that will not be taken up tonight.
And so what we're gonna do here is look at those. If anybody thinks they need to get up and have some discussion on Article 3, 4, 5, or 6, then you, then you can stand up, and we will not include it in the consent agenda. Does, uh, everybody understand that? All make sense? Hey, folks, you gotta sit down over there. Come on, let's go. Let's go. Not kidding, we'll hold up the meeting until you're sitting down, then you'll be, aspersions will be cast on you. You sit down? All right. Does anyone object to any, to Article 3, 4, 5, 6, or 7 being included in the consent agenda? There being no, uh, there being no objection, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayo, will you make your motion?
Yes, that the town vote to take the following articles out of order and as part of a consent agenda, Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, there isn't, because they're consent agenda. All right, all in favor? All opposed? Mr. Mayo, Article 1.
No, uh, that the town vote to approve the following articles as part of a consent agenda, Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. The effective motions of each individual article, we have stated in the recommendation book, all articles are majority, with the exception of Article 7, which requires a two-thirds vote. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayo.
I'll set for the vote, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, and that was more than two-thirds. Oh, do you wanna discuss this on the consent agenda? Come on up, Jim. Well, the consent agenda is to limit discussion, but go ahead, discuss.
Thankfully, the finance committee recommended favorable action.
Sort of a given? All right, all right. Article 1, Mr. Mayo.
Point of order. There we go.
Yeah.
I was waiting for that.
Come on, move in, folks, we don't wanna hold up the meeting. Let's go. Plenty of good seats down front.
Uh, good evening. I, Dawn Millward of 18 Emerald Street, move to prioritize the consideration of the warrant Articles 17 and 18 out of order, advancing them to the beginning or after warrant 1 is heard of our town meeting. The rationale of this is efficient use of time, facilitating public participation, and transparency, and accountability. In conclusion, prioritize, prioritizing the warrant at the beginning of our town meeting is a strategic decision that promotes efficiency, transparency, and public, public participation. I, I urge my fellow members to-
Okay, whoa, whoa, you're making a motion, not your speech now. So your motion is to move, uh, but you, you did leave the option to do the budget first?
No.
Read it again, read it again, then.
Sure. I, Dawn Millward of 18 Emerald Street, move to prioritize the consideration of the warrant Articles 17 and 18 out of order, advancing them to the beginning of war, of the warrant at our town meeting?
What happened to Article 1 there, the first time, huh?
After Article 17 and 18 first, after, I don't know, a little hope, what am I?
After, after 1.
After 1.
Which is the budget.
Which is the budget.
Which is a good idea, okay. So now the discussion will be, do we move it to second place after the budget? Am I, are you correct? There's a second, okay. So I just wanna be clear here, we'll get the budget out of the way, and then we'll get to 17 and 18.
Yes.
Excellent, good idea. All right. Is there any discussion? This will require a two-thirds vote, correct, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
All right. Is there any discussion? Oh, there being no discussion. Um, all in favor? All opposed? Is anybody opposed? Well, we're gonna have to count now. All right, tellers, you're up. Wait, no? You don't wanna count? Cause there's no bonding?
No.
Oh, okay, there's no statute involved? Or bonding? Don't leave out the bonding part. All right, so, uh, the motion carries, so Mr. Mayo will do the budget, and then we will go to 17 and 18. All right? All, so we already voted, yeah, okay. All right. Mr. Mayo, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds, the sums of money is detailed in the following recommendations for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. The grant total amounting to $127,826,69. The motions will be provided for, the breakdown of this amount, and the sources thereof, and the various classifications as described in the recommendation book, to carry out the purpose of this article. Thank you. I know how all of you look forward to my opening comments and historical and pop culture references as we begin town meeting. It is great to be here in Veterans Memorial Auditorium as we consider some of the important issues for Wakefield over the next year and beyond. In thinking about my remarks this year, I was struck by the eclipse mania that seemed to sweep the country. Even our own comments saw perhaps 100 people enjoying the celestial phenomenon. But the word eclipse has other, perhaps more appropriate meetings for, for our purposes today. I think the definition to become more important and noticeable is better suited for town meeting. So as we deliberate the, over the 23 articles before us for this town meeting, let us remember that whatever side of a particular issue you are on, let's not eclipse Wakefield's driving mission, that as a community, we strive to bolster a culture of excellence that accommodates all of our residents. Even if we disagree with another's position on a particular item, I for one, and I hope you do too, believe that, that for that person, it is all about making Wakefield better. We may just disagree on the path. So whether we are talking about budgets, trash, zoning, flags, or position statements, let's not eclipse the true vision and purpose of this great community. Remember as 70's singer and songwriter Dave Mason Coons, "There ain't no good guy, there ain't no bad guy, there's only you and me, and we just disagree." I should've sung it, let me, next time I-
Wow! That is way hipper than Florida Georgia Line, your other favorite band. What band was Dave Mason in?
The budget presented replaces expiring grants with local dollars to continue some of the strategic initiatives that has helped protect and move Wakefield forward in public safety, education, mental health, wellness, and addresses our need to provide for smooth succession as some of our older town employees phase out. Some other areas have not increased as much as we would've liked, like capital, but that area is and has been supplemented with grants, which we will continue to pursue. We are also operating in a financial atmosphere of less help from the state and local aid, and certainly as a percentage-wise, very, much less. These strategic placement of our resources does not come without a financial cost, and unlike some of our neighbors, who, which are facing cuts or potential overrides for operations, we currently are not, but as Dan Sherman presented earlier this evening, we need to be ever vigilant and careful in our budgeting in order to maintain a solvent future. We have worked long and hard and diligently with the town council, finance committee, and school committee to constantly tweak our budgets and financial forecasts, and hopefully ensure the strong balance sheet we all deserve. And by the way, I'm certainly an optimist, and I think we will be fine. So once again, I thank all of our wonderful volunteers, elected and appointed members of town committees, our steadfast town employees, especially our first responders, who every day put their lives in potential danger to keep us all safe, and last but not least, our brother and sister citizens, whose support is so important and appreciated. Finally, I wish to thank my department heads, particularly Kevin Gill, our town accountant, John McCarthy, our treasurer, Victor Santinello, our director of assessments, and Dan, he plays that close to the vest with me, too. I try to get those numbers as well. Um, and my administrative assistant, Sherri Dalton, the finance committee, and especially the town council, for all their hard work, support, and dedication. It is important to note that all budgets and articles before you today of a monetary nature have been approved by either town council or school committee, and every budget or article includes a recommendation from the finance committee. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I will move on to the general government portion of, of the budget. Motion there being that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,982,070 for general government, and provide therefore that the sum of $4,500 be appropriated by transfer from the Wetlands Protection Act filing fees account to the Conservation Commission personal services account, and the sum of $2,977,570 be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Second.
Thank you. The general government portion of the town budget provides for the majority of the administrative departments of the town. The total amount recommended for general government is $2,982,070, an increase of $192,249 from last year, from last fiscal year. Although happy to answer any questions, the only real area of substantive change is in the town council department, as this budget includes $100,000 for an assistant town administrator position, as we begin the process of developing some succession planning of senior staff in the town administrator's office and town accountant's office. Also, we are funding for an additional election in fiscal year '25. This budget also includes treasurers, IT, legal, tax collectors, assessors, town clerks, election, registration, conservation, finance committee planning board, and board of appeals. All are essentially level funded, with the exception of contractual and negotiating items and those that I mentioned. The recommendation for the general government portion of Article 1 is $2,982,070 with $4,500 from available funds, and $2,977,570 from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book. Um, all budgets are supported by the town council and recommended by the finance committee.
Any discussion under, oh, I'm sorry, FinCom, all right, all right, all right.
The finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the general government portion of Article 1?
Yes, Trista Belmonte of 13 Summit Ave., and a member of the Conservation Commission. I move to amend the Conservation Department's budget by increasing the personal services line item by $24,090 to reflect an increase from 19 to 30 in the number of weekly budgeted hours for one of the two towns, two conservation agents, the other conservation agents' weekly budgeted hours to remain at 5.
Okay, Tom, is that under general government? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Um, is there a second? You, go ahead with your, no, you said second, good job. Yeah. Pardon? No, you're good, that was a good job, you, and you stood up, too, I like that. Jonathan doesn't stand up when he seconds it. He just yells around, "Second." You're up.
Thank you. Um, why do we need to increase one of our two conservation agents' hours from 19 to 30? Basically because the work of the Conservation Commission has become more complex over the years, which requires the conservation agent to spend more time on matters. In addition, our conservation agent had been spending more than the 19 hours allotted to her to do her job. The Conservation Commission is charged with enforcing the state's Wetlands Protection Act, as well as promoting and developing natural resources and protecting watershed resources. The complexity of filings with the commission under the Wetlands Protection Act has increased. Recent complex filings include the 440 residential, um, three-building development at 200 Quanta Power Parkway, the new Volk Tech, the 124 residential apartment building, um, at 10 Broadway, the 36 residential unit building at 572-597 North Avenue. In addition, quantity of land available for development has increased development adjacent to wetlands, requiring more care and scrutiny. According to a survey that the Mass Department of Environmental Protection published, Wakefield has the fourth least number of conservation agents' hours in the Northeast. In addition, east of surrounding towns of Reading, Saugus, and Linfield have- In addition, each of the surrounding towns of Reading, Saugus, and Linfield have a full-time equivalent in the role of conservation agent. What do our conservation agents do? They attend our semi-monthly meetings, some of which can last up to four hours. They review the filings, they go on site visits, they give comments on projects to the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the Building Department. They have office hours so that Wakefield residents can call to find out how to comply with the Wetlands Protection Act. Our longtime conservation agent recently left, in part because there were not enough budgeted hours for her to properly do her work. In addition, although this position's open position has been posted for over months, only three applicants have applied and none of them have been qualified. Having this be a part-time position is an impediment to finding a new agent. The $24,090 increase we are requesting is only 0.02% of the town's budget. I make this motion on behalf of myself as a current Conservation Commission member and the other six members of the Conservation Commission. My term on the Conservation Commission expires tomorrow, but I feel compelled to make this motion so that Wakefield is ready to meet the environmental challenges threatening our natural resources that lie ahead. Thank you.
Any further discussion? While folks are sitting down in their seats. I'm waiting. Don't worry.
Hello, Bronwyn Dullavell, B8 Cyrus Street. I'm so glad that this, uh, motion was, was put up. It's been very, very disheartening over the last several months, um, and as well as the, the presentation so far tonight, to hear about all the other budget increases. When I watched the finance committee meetings and I watched the town council meetings regarding our budgets, um, I was very discouraged and distressed because there were increases and increases and increases, but when it came to the Conservation Commission, there was not. I'm not sure why. Now, maybe some others have gone down a little bit or some have been level funded. But I would like to repeat something that the, the, our previous speaker said. One reason why our, our conservation agent left this town was because she did not have the time and the resources to do an adequate job. With all the development in town and all of the climate-related troubles that we're experiencing and will continue to experience, and with another topic that's coming up tonight, the MBTA, um, uh, housing zoning mandate, um, we're gonna be experiencing more development. We cannot, in good conscience, stand as a town when we are one of the few who does not have a full-time conservation agent, a qualified, experienced conservation agent. I'd like to repeat one of the things the previous speaker said that should alarm all of us, that we no longer have a full, a, a qualified conservation agent on hand because she did not have the time or the resources to do her job. That has to be remedied. What the Conservation Commission is asking for tonight is literally a drop in the bucket to this community's budget. I would be embarrassed if we did not allow this to happen tonight. We just talked about $100,000 for a new position, an assistant town manager position, so newly-created position. $100,000! And yet we cannot finance our Conservation Commission adequately? Where are our priorities here? Everything is important and everything needs our attention, but I, I find this an outrage. The town boasts about how wonderful we are, and yet we can't have a full-time conservation agent to take care of everyone's concerns? I urge everyone to think about this very, very carefully and put it in context, the amount of money that is being asked, pittance, pennies compared to this budget, that the Conservation Commission is asking. This needed, necessary increase will help the town be able to hire a qualified and experienced conservation agent. Part-time without benefits is not going to attract the kind of person Wakefield desperately needs right now. And I urge you all to think very carefully and to please vote this in. It's, it'll be well worth 10 times the money that it will cost the town. Thank you.
Attorney Belmonte, where is your motion? Can I get a copy of it? Yeah, sorry, no, that's my fault, I forgot. You can hand that to Attorney Mullen. Okay. You're up.
My name's Eleanor Axelrod, 19 Sheffield Road. I am actually stepping into a new role as commissioner, um, but I want to make the town aware we lost a tremendous resource in our, um, previous agent, Rebecca Davis. She had 25 years of experience, and as Teresa Belmonte mentioned, the resumes we are getting are people who haven't graduated school. They're really not qualified to do this highly technical work that involves, um, being a wetlands expert, wildlife biologist, understanding stormwater reports, soil analysis, geology. It is an incredibly complicated skill set that has no comparable person in town to replicate. Yet in this year's budget cycle, we have, you know, essentially created duplicate roles. I also want to mention, we've had three conservation agents who are no, who have not renewed, so this represents another collective, 50 years plus in collective knowledge. So in total, to the town, we have lost 75 years of collective experience. I'm coming in with zero years of experience. I think we should all be concerned. We need to be able to attract competitive candidates. Um, we are competing against other towns who are also looking for full-time candidates. Those include Wilmington and Drakeitt. And we need somebody who is experienced, who can help guide. This is not a voting position, this is a technical expert that helps the commission, helps developers, helps homeowners decipher the issues. Um, so please consider this modest increase of $24,000 and change a well-spent budget item. Thank you. And if you want a visual, this is a copy, not even of the regs, just what a conservation agent needs to go through. So it is a huge volume. I, I won't drop it, but it's a couple thousand pages.
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Uh, just one question. We have a snow management plan that goes with an awful lot of the applicants that come into the Conservation Commission, uh, in regards to plowing and storage of snow. Uh, without a Conservation Commission agent, I don't know who, is there another person in this town that could take that job on if we don't have that?
Mr. Mayo, can you answer that?
Well, we do have another part-time conservation agent who has increased her hours, so, and she's very good, she's very technically done. But our town engineer also looks at those things, so, yeah, when we need to, yes.
Yeah, because it's very important. We have, uh, a lot of, uh, waterways in town, including Lake Quanapawet. Uh, several years ago, uh, the landscaper up there was plowing snow, and they were plowing it right into Lake Quanapawet, right out of the parking lots, in violation of the snow management plan. And the snow that goes into that pond is all, Lake Quanapawet, is full of, uh, oil and debris on the bottom of the cars that get, uh, washed, you know, on the back of the, uh, on the bottom of the cars from the snow. And that goes for over at Edgewater Office Park. I see water being plowed into the water over there. So it's very important to have an agent to keep their eye on this stuff, so I, I would support this. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. Plenty of good seats down front, folks. Let's go. Are you speaking as a town councillor?
I speak as an individual.
Take the walk.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much. Mike McLean, 19 Fairmount Avenue. Um, and just in case people didn't know, this was a close vote. In the former town council, it was a four-to-three vote. Um, I was persuaded to vote for it, and there's primarily two reasons. First of all, we have had a number of positions that we've created, a number of positions we've funded, and the usual argument is that we need to retain, uh, qualified, long-term employees, and we lost one here because of this. Um, this individual had significant, uh, experience, she had the requisite degrees. I don't think, you know, everybody in town can do the job that we lost there, and, um, in, in addition to that, this was a, uh, a person who, you know, more or less immediately got a full-time job with DEP with benefits, and can you blame her? And one other thing that I would say is that we as a, um, town are trying to retain, you know, these people, and I'm just, you know, I'm disappointed we didn't do it in this particular case, so I hope you'll consider, uh, supporting the amendment, amendment as made in the motion. Thank you.
Are you heading to the microphone? Okay. Plenty of good seats down front, folks. Twenty-five, Betsy counted them. You can sit next to the Scots, they're lovely people. Peter doesn't want anybody near him, no, no, no. Mr. Charming.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Fanning for Pheasantwood Drive, and I also support, uh, funding this new position for the reasons that the previous speakers have all said. Um, and I'd like to also, um, clarify something, which is that my understanding is that the conservation agent who remains with the town is only five hours a week, um, and is not able to scale up her hours because she's a full-time agent also in Winchester. Um, so with these few hours, there's no way that she could possibly, uh, fulfill the requirements and the needs of the town, um, that have already been described by the other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, let's go. Lots of seats right here. We could pay somebody to usher. Anybody else? Anybody heading towards the mic? All right, okay, last minute thought.
Hello, Haley McCattan-Baloo, 71 Forest Street. Um, I am also a current commissioner on the Conservation Commission, approximately two-ish years, um, and I would like to let you all know that the more I learn in my time with the Conservation Commission through the MACC and other education opportunities, the more I realize that I do not know, and I think it's important for everyone in this town to realize, uh, the level of knowledge and skill that goes into this job, a lot of it could be, um, described as clerical in administration and can be shared between other employees of the town, but a lot of it absolutely cannot. Uh, Rebecca, we've talked about Rebecca, who had master's degrees, uh, in environmental engineering, who was doing continued education through workshops and seminars. Um, and again, it was mentioned that our other part-time agent, Elaine, is a full-time agent in Winchester and is really only meant to be supplemental to our other agent who is now a vacant, um, position. And I think it's also important to note that there are updated regulations coming out very soon from the DEP, so that will require a lot more reading, a lot more learning. Um, and in case you're interested, comments on the updated regs are due tomorrow through the DEP website. But a reminder that if you have seen any flooding in town, if you have seen any stormwater issues, you can tie that directly back to conservation issues. Um, and that is what we're here to hopefully work on and fix and make Wakefield better and healthier for future generations and ensure that there is still wetlands and open space for, for many, many years. Because climate change, whether you believe it or not, is here, is happening right now. We are in a crisis, we are in the sixth mass extinction, uh, we are losing species at an astronomical rate, um, and it's only going to get worse. We're going to see worse storms, more intense weather, um, more species lost, and it's only going to hurt us. So I cannot, I cannot urge you enough, please invest in conservation because the, the payout that it will give Wakefield on the back end is a million times more than what we're asking to put in now. Thank you.
Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. Um, so I thought I had referenced they were trying to bump this to 30 hours. Is, so is 30 thou, 30 hours for the town considered full-time and part-time still?
That will be benefit-eligible, if that's your question.
It'd be benefit-eligible?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that, considering the, the amount of tasks that these persons are asked to do, and that we seem to have lost some really good talent because it seems like they've gone above and beyond probably what they were getting paid to do, to do all this work. Not that I'm for more government intervention and stuff, but I think that we should probably vote to put this through, and I'm just wondering if we can carve some money off of somewhere else within this budget to fund this?
But that's not the motion, though. So, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment under general government, Article One?
Bob Vincent, 22 Flanders Lane. Um, I also was one of the members of the town council that did vote in support of this position, although in talking to the town administrator, I do know that since Rebecca Davis resigned, the town has been able to assume those responsibilities. Um, that said, I wanted to share just a few salient facts, um, with you before you make a decision on this, uh, amendment. The chair, Mr. Luciani, has been on the Conservation Commission for 39 years. To put that in perspective, I'm 64 years old, which means I was 25 when he first got on the Conservation Commission. Many of you in the room weren't even born yet. He said at our meeting, this was the first time the Conservation Commission ever asked for a full-time position. Approximately 100 municipalities in Massachusetts have a full-time conservation agent right now. In the fall of '23, at the Massachusetts Conservation Commission Conference, there was a workshop entitled Conservation Agents in Distress because of the high number of new, high turnover of new conservation staff in Massachusetts. For, Wakefield had 26 Conservation Commission meetings last year with a part-time conservation agent. To put that in perspective, Reading, which had a, has a full-time agent, had 22 meetings. Linfield, which has a full-time agent, had 15 meetings, and Saugus, which has a full-time agent, only had 12 meetings. The conservation agent clearly helps in preparing and attending those meetings, each, each one of the 26 meetings. The last thing I'll note, if I think I'm correct, the Conservation Commission is actually now going down to only five members as of tomorrow. They're allowed to have seven, three are getting off, only one new person came on. So I think it might be a little bit difficult for the Conservation Commission with only having five members and currently not even having, um, the part-time position that was filled before. Being filled might be problematic. The other thing I'll note is that if we don't have a Conservation Commission, um, under Massachusetts general law, the town council has to assume those responsibilities, and I certainly don't want- And I certainly don't want to assume those. Thank you.
Brandon LaRoche, 2 Delana Lane. I'd like to call the question forward and limit debate. And as a next point of motion, bring up the school budget, please.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, that's a hot fudge sundae. You want to move the discussion, you want to end the discussion, move the question on this motion?
Yep.
Okay, that's all you can do right now?
Okay.
Okay? Is there a second? Is there any discussion on moving the question? Two-thirds, correct? All in favor? All opposed? Uh, Tom, can you just read, can you just read that, the motion, for me? Or hand it to me or something? The motion before you is, "I move to amend the Conservation Department budget by increasing personal services line item by $24,090 to reflect an increase from 19 to 30 in the number of weekly budgeted hours for one of the two conservation agents. The other conservation's weekly budget hours to remain at five." All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Tom, I'm gonna give this to Betsy, okay? Yeah, we're back on the main motion, which is, Mr. Mayo, $2,982.70?
Plus $24.90 from tax levy.
Plus $24.90?
Yes, $24,090.
Okay.
From tax levy.
Okay. Any further discussion on general government? There being no discussion, the motion is to approve $2,982.70 plus $24,090. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, what do we get next?
Protections of persons and property.
All right.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $15,680,422 for protection of persons and property, as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second?
Thank you. The Protection of Persons and Property section of the budget for fiscal year '25 has been set at $15,680,422. This figure includes the contract settlements for police and fire, which were approved in November of '24. The Police Department budget is $7,514,617. This budget provides for a police force of 47 police officers, including dedicated school resource officers at the Wakefield Memorial High School, Galvin Middle School, and the Vocational School, as well as mission-specific positions, which focus on domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse, as well as family-related issues. Our Police Department is recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a certified police department. Only a handful in the state are so distinguished. I believe that not only is certification a testament to the high quality and ideals professed by the chief and his entire corps of officers, but has also been helpful in obtaining grants, as well as adopting best practices for the day-to-day operations designed to better serve the public while reducing the risks of lawsuits. It seems that almost daily I receive letters or calls about how professional and caring our Police Department is at all levels. We owe great debt of gratitude to the Police Chief and his entire staff. The Fire Department budget is $7,466,154. The increases are in contractual and overtime areas and reflects the fact that the SAFRA grant, which covered the cost of four firefighters for three years, has ended. And we got about a million dollars in grants, a million dollars from that grant. As with the police, this budget reflects that the fire contract was settled last November. I'm happy to say that this budget continues to include the deputy chief and fire protection officer positions, maintains the Greenwood Fire Station, as well as our continued adoption of best practices by ensuring that every piece is adequately manned and serviced by an officer. Also, we did increase overtime by $50,000. We are grateful for the good work that our Fire Department does. Emergency management is slightly increased as our emergency management director is more full-time than part-time. One of the best dollar values around. The fire alarm, police signals, and traffic light portions of the section is increased slightly to cover the rising cost of parts and the few more hours that are needed to handle all of these items. The inspectional services is increased due to contractual negotiated increases. I, for one, am very impressed with how the building manages, building, department manages, all these tasks, along with monitoring new construction. Finally, this department continues to be a great revenue source, generating over $1.8 million in fees so far this year-to-date. Last year, for the full fiscal year, was $1,003,000. So I hope we have a couple of months left. Let's get some more building permits issued. The Animal Inspector and Parking Clerk budgets are basically level funded. The entire amount requested for protection of persons and property is $15,680,422, all from tax levy.
Finca, didn't forget you.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion on protection of persons and property? There being no motion, as soon as everybody sits down, we'll take a vote. Thank you. Take it while they're moving. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo?
Human Services, that the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $1,125,069 for human services, as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Chines?
Second.
Thank you.
The request for human services portion of the article is $1,125,069. The request budget for the Council of Aging is $288,193, an increase of $29,504, mainly due to the expansion of the Program and Activities Director from part to full-time. The Council of Aging continues to do a marvelous job under the direction of Karen Burke and her wonderful staff. And I've gotta say that when I'm having a bad day, I can go to the senior center and enjoy some of the activities there and then go watch a kindergarten class with superintendent and get both ends. And it kind of makes you feel good on both ends of the spectrum. The Health and Human Services budget is recommended at $507,762. It is certainly clear that from the federal level to the local level, increasing services to better the mental health and well-being of all is paramount. Our partnership with Merrows &amp; Stonem is paying huge dividends in delivering services, keeping costs down, and enhancing our ability to receive grants. The Recreation budget is increased by $5,118. Demograph and staff continue to provide great programs for the community, young and old. And his recent management of the Albion Cultural Exchange is an unqualified success. I expect an explosion of activities this summer. So sign up soon, as I know these programs, you know, they sell out very quickly. The Veterans budget is increased by $3,787 and maintains the Veterans recipients line item and its current amount of $110,000. And I've repeated this number of times for the last 15, 16 years now. We will never turn a veteran away that needs services. We've always found a way to do it. So thank you for all the work in that department. And thank the boards that helped them. Total recommendation for Human Services, section of Article One, is $1,125,069, all from tax levy.
Mr. Sullivan?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the Human Services portion?
I have a question. Dorothy Hoyland, 7 Ballister Street. In the Health and Human Services Department, personnel services amount goes up from $199,000 to $313,000. Can you explain that?
Yes, I can. In fact, I flipped the pages too quickly. It was part of my spiel, so I apologize. What happened was that we had a, we were using ARPA funds before and for position, we're not using ARPA funds anymore to fund, to fund positions in the town. And there was a position that was on a grant, and that grant expired. So kind of the same thing with the Fire Department.
Okay.
Any further discussion under the Human Services portion of Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to approve All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Department?
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $8,102,058 for Public Works and to provide therefore that, the sum of $110,740 be appropriated by transfer to the Public Works Personal Services account from the following accounts. Perpetual care income, $46,738. Park trust funds available, $2. Sale of lots funds, $64,000. And the sum of $7,991,318 be raised and appropriated from tax levy, as stated in the recommendation book.
Thank you, Mr. Chines.
Thank you. The request for the Public Works budget is $8,102,058, an increase of $281,489, or 3.5% over last year. The bulk of the increases are due to contractual obligations, as well as a new position necessary to help maintain and clean the ACE building, the Police Department, as we're using that community room more for night meetings, as it is Zoom-capable, and the new bathroom by the lake that will be done this fall. Staffing level for Public Works will be 78, including water and sewer, in fiscal year 2025. However, staffing levels are still short of the 84 employed in the 90s. The Public Works Department has done an excellent job in preparing their budget and maintaining the town's infrastructure under difficult fiscal constraints. The funding added to this budget is greatly needed and will go a long way to improve a great community. But I do say this is a no-frills budget. It is a budget that provides efficient, effective, and economical services to the community. The DPW's professional approach and dedication has been key to maintaining the core services that they provide. And I want to thank, I know a lot of the staff is over there. Thank you for all the good work you do, from Joe Conway on down. The recommendation for this portion of the budget is that $8,102,058 be appropriated with $7,991,318 from tax levy and $110,740 from available funds.
Mr. Sullivan?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? Motion before you is the sum that Mr. Mayo just read. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Enterprise Department, Mr. Mayo?
Yes, that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $16,837,744 for Public Works Enterprise Departments and to provide therefore that, the sum of $7,470,570 be appropriated by transfer from water receipts to the various Water Division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book and the sum of $9,367,204 be appropriated by transfer from sewer receipts to the various Sewer Division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book.
Mr. Chines, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chines. The Water and Sewer Divisions are self-sustaining departments and are not part of the tax levy. These two budgets are well-structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water sewer infrastructure and provide safe drinking water to the community. This budget, the Water Enterprise, to talk about them, this budget has increased $240,855, mainly due to an increase in maturing debt. And that's debt that we received to, you know, replace the water mains and what have you. The MWRRA amount represents 46% of the water budget. While a final MWRRA assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRRA budget that is adopted. The Public Works Department has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. The Sewer side, this budget has increased only $22,216. It is important to note that the MWRRA sewer assessment represents 74% of the total sewer budget. The final MWRRA assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRRA budget that is adopted. Both the Water and Sewer budgets are well-structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water sewer infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and allow the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first responder responsibilities. And again, the DPW has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in the Water and Sewer Department. Recommendation for this portion of the budget is that $16,837,744 be appropriated from the respective Enterprise divisions.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry. Well, this is not, this is, they raised their own money. I thought you guys didn't have anything to do with this.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Get out of that, huh? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The School Department?
Good evening. The School, that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $52,434,699 for the School Department and to provide therefore that the sum of $115,000 be appropriated by the transfer to the School Department Contractual Services Line, Bus Transportation Allocation, from the offset receipts, 2025 bus transportation user fees, and that the sum of $52,319,699 be raised and appropriated from the tax levy. The total recommended budget for the School Department is $52,434,699.
Thank you, Mr. Chines.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here this evening. This budget that we're proposing this evening is predominantly to fund a new teacher contract, which is well-deserved. Labor across the state, when we talk to our state delegation, has been a problem. And often absent from this conversation is the deficit or the areas that we're having difficulty hiring and retaining teachers. So this new teacher contract, again, it's well-deserved. And we feel it will allow us to retain current teachers and attract new positions. We're also supporting faculty and staff in the increases in special education and student needs and out-of-district costs. Every year, when we present our budget, we're asked about out-of-district placements, costs for special education. And we're asked, do we create programming in district to support students as opposed to sending students out of district for support? The answer is always. We always try to create programs in district because to initially outlay money to save in the long run is the way to go. It also allows students to be educated in district here with their peers. So that's something that we're working really hard to balance. Our number of out-of-district placements has increased this fiscal year by six. We are now at 36 students. This budget also supports our English language learners, English language learners or multilingual learners. They are students whose families do not primarily speak English at home. This year, we have 30-plus students. That is an increase. It also will fund mental and behavioral health supports for students and the need for early literacy intervention, which includes a new literacy screener and the support and implementation of the new literacy program based on the science of reading. We could not be more pleased at the gains that we're making. But there is still a lot to do, and there are a lot of gaps that we need to fill. Again, this budget has no new positions and predominantly is for labor. We feel very strongly that Wakefield is a great place to raise a family. When we meet new families in Wakefield 101, we couldn't be more pleased to welcome them to the town. And we feel like the reason that people are moving here in small part, in small part, is due to the schools and what's happening in our classrooms. People are selecting Wakefield because of the value and the primary part, again, that comes from the value from our schools. Our graduation rate in 2023 was 60, excuse me, 96.1%. 93% of our grads go off to college. We offer 21 AP and dual-enrollment courses at the high school. Our class sizes at middle and high school are 20 to 1, exceptional by any standard. Our numbers at the elementary level are another story. Our numbers at our early childhood center are busting at the seams. This year, we needed to turn away 60 families, 60 students. We offer 28 exceptional varsity athletic teams. We have 35 extracurricular clubs and activities. We have a state championship music program. And again, an exceptional early childhood center, which we just had more. wish we just had more space there. Again, it's a, Wakefield is a great place to be and to work. And so that's something that's important. We included this slide in regard to our calendar. These are formal meetings that take place, both with our Subcommittee from our School Committee. We have a Labor Subcommittee and a Finance Subcommittee. And so these meetings start, and the informal part of planning a budget really starts in October. We meet with all of our principals, and we build from the ground up. We ask them, what do you need to continue to provide service to students at your schools? Not what do you wish you had, what do you need? And we budget for what is known at that time. We survey students, excuse me, we survey students, we survey parents, we survey faculty and staff. And you'll see on this list that we also meet with the Finance Committee so that they can hear the Superintendent's recommended budget. This doesn't include a number of meetings that we have with our FinCom liaisons. And then after the School Committee accepts the Superintendent's budget, we go back to FinCom to present again. We met with Town Council this year, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from all of the groups that we've met with. And then we have our final presentation, and here we are this evening at Town Meeting. So something new this year in our budget book and our preparation. It goes back to where we were last year. I sat at this podium, and I was very brief in my remarks. And there was a lot of conversation about the need for more information around revolving accounts. So we took that to heart. The FinCom gave us very clear guidelines, and they asked us if we would work to provide more information about our revolving accounts and to work really hard, not only looking back, but looking ahead in terms of how we might create chargebacks to decrease the burden on the tax levy and how we might take on benefits to better support the town. So there are eight revolving accounts: Building Rental, School Lunch, Wakefield Academy, Athletics, Performing Arts, Doyle Preschool, Summer School, and Culinary Arts. There are authorizing statutes through the Mass General Law, Chapter 71 and Section 71E, and MGL 71, Section 47, that guide and authorize what funds can be used for in these accounts. This is not a kind of, this is not free cash. This is not something that can simply be accessed, and we can move money in and out of these things. For example, we would not take athletic user fees and just move money out of that and take services away from students, okay? So this year, we worked really hard based on the feedback that we got from our FinCom liaisons and the Finance Committee and the feedback that we got last year in the Spring Town Meeting. And we worked with a consultant. And we did a 10-year analysis. We did a look back and a look ahead. And what we have is a FY '25 to FY '28 look at chargebacks that we are proposing, that we make from revolving to, again, decrease the tax levy. And we're also proposing support for benefits moving forward from '25 to '28. Again, it's very strict guidelines in terms of what these funds can be used for. So this budget this year, you can see, this is a comparison FY '24 to FY '25. And you'll see that personnel, are they really the areas of increase? And so, again, when I started off my comments, I said this was a labor budget, and it is. So we're, again, very pleased to be able to have settled our teacher contract. A number of towns on the North Shore here have not been able to do that, which has resulted in some pretty hard times. So we've been able to do that with the help of Mr. Mayo and certainly of the School Committee and the Labor Subcommittee. But we're pleased to bring this budget forward. We feel like it's responsible. We feel like it's sustainable. And we feel like it's, again, something that is a model to be kind of looked at. Challenges and opportunities. Challenges for us. The continued cost to retain, attract personnel, as well as workloads put upon faculty and staff. We're asking more, we're asking more of all personnel in our ranks. And that needs to be part of the narrative. Please, please hear my words on that. We're increasing services to keep students in district. We're providing counseling and behavioral supports that we've never provided before post-COVID. Students have needs, right? And so, and numbers don't always equal needs. So it's kind of easy to talk about spreadsheets, but when we have students that are in our district, in our classrooms, that have needs, we are legally obligated to provide support to meet those needs. So we need to provide EL support and literacy services along with intervention services that are mandated by law. We're also looking at state and federal grant opportunities that are ending this year. Opportunities ahead. We're working really hard, and we can see the progress that we're making and that the town is making to complete WMHS, a new high school. And along with that will come a new NIASC accreditation. We're working to create new learning opportunities, excuse me, new learning opportunities for students in the STEAM fields. Again, we're looking to attract new teachers to fill open positions. Some of our positions are, again, very, very difficult to fill. And we're also looking at creating opportunities for students to learn real-time about construction, power generation, and the new energy park and the new building that's currently being built real-time. I'd like to thank the School Committee for their support. I'd like to thank the District Administration, Christine Bufagna, Rosie Galvin, and of course, Cara Morrow. That's it at this point. So thank you so much.
Just under the wire, Mr. Superintendent.
The Finance Committee recommends against this motion and recommends a $500,000 reduction in this budget, as noted in the book. That's $51,934,699. And again, that is a recommendation of $500,000 less than is in the book. The Finance Committee deliberated on this budget. As the Superintendent noted, it was an eight to five vote to bring you this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen? Is that technically a motion or just a recommendation? Just a recommendation? Okay. Any discussion on the motion under the School Department portion of Article 1? Are you speaking as a FinCom member? Oh, then take the walk.
I have a presentation.
Oh, you have a presentation? And how long will this be, Mr. Sherman?
At least 25 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm back here keeping an eye on you. Seriously, what do you got? Nobody, nobody gave me this. No, I don't like surprises. Yeah. Do you have it in writing? Tom, in writing, correct? You'll write it down right when you quickly move through your discussion? He has a presentation. If you check in early, you can use this to do your presentation because it'd be very difficult up there. So thank you. Excuse, wait, excuse, excuse me. Pardon me? It is permissible. Always has been. Always has been. Yeah, no, it's discretionary. You know, he's, come on, he wants to use this thing. Yeah, okay. And your point over here, just yelling out, what was that? Okay, can you stand up? I can't, I can't really. Where are you? Oh, okay. So you want to know if his presentation was done with Town Resources?
Right, because I've seen this before.
Oh, it's going to be quick. It's Dan Sherman's personal presentation. And he's an actuarial. That's smart guy stuff. Yeah, no, it's his own personal. And when somebody does a personal, they get to use here because it would be very difficult to use your laptop up there. So within the moderator's discretion, let's go quickly.
I move to reduce the requested School Department budget by $500,000.
Is there a second? Mr. Sherman?
Thank you. So just, so this will be a recap. The tax levy portion for fiscal year '23 for the School Department is $47.8 million. Their expenditure was $46.9 million in '23, so they have unspent cash of $462,000 that got carried over into '24. They also returned $408,629 to the General Fund, which was much appreciated. Thank you very much. We requested more than that, but we'll take the 408. Happy to have it. The budget for fiscal year '24 is $49,590,000. And so therefore, if you add the 461 unspent plus the 49, you get a total available for fiscal year '24 of $50 million. During the fiscal year '23, other departments returned $2.3 million. School Department, $400,000. Circuit breakers, a key item here. Fiscal year sped costs for circuit breaker coverage was $1.685 for '23, $1.697 for '24. They had unused aid from '22 of about $1 million. And unused aid for '23, $1.3 million. They're allowed to carry those figures over into '24 of $1.6 million. So basically, the way the circuit breaker works, if you don't spend it off, you don't have qualified expenses, you get to carry over a previous year's amount into the new year. We also have a stabilization account for sped. As right now, it's about $308,000. Initially, it was about $500,000, but it's down to $308,000. And with, everybody thinks the $308,000 is sufficient for the moment. So we get the revolving accounts. And this is the one that we've had a lot of fun trying to figure out what's going on. And I appreciate the new booklets. It went through a lot more detail, very beneficial, a big help. But my personal issue, and I think what drove, I'm not going to speak for other FinCom members who decided to vote in favor of the reduction. But the balance is at $3.6 million for both 2023 and estimated for 2024. Obviously, an historic high. And the big push to get it up that high was because of COVID. And you'll see, if you look at the School Budget Book, they are reducing it very slowly over, I think, five or six-year period. But to me, the big issue, and this is personal, is why these balances are so large? Why do we have $3.6 million in revolving accounts? If anything, I think it should be coming down faster. I think it should be used for other things and maybe give the parents a break and reduce how much you're charging for these various revolving accounts. But the historical balances, you'll see from 2020 down to 2016, were much, much smaller. And to me, it's like, this doesn't make any sense. And so, available funds for fiscal year '24. They have prepaid costs from '23 of $460,000. The circuit breaker, they have $1,370,000. Revolving accounts, they have $3.6 million. So total of about $5.4 million, some of which is available, some of it which is not, as the Superintendent just discussed. Our town free cash is at $8.5 million. But after the Fall Town Meeting of last November, it's down to about $7 million. And again, if you add the $3 million that we have in stabilization, we are below our 10% policy for reserves in terms of the total reserves versus the total budget.
One minute, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you, sir. So where's this coming from? So I did some analysis in terms of payroll services, and you'll see that the total line went from $56 million up to $57.9, just a 3.2% increase. And if you stop right there, you say, geez, this is pretty good, 3.2. I've been pushing them for 4% for years. However, their circuit breaker got hit. They had 1.69, and then now it's 1.3. That hurts. Grants went down from $2.9 million down to $2.1. Revolving accounts, they bumped that up. Reading had been contributing $400,000 for fiscal year '24. It dropped down to $100, and you have the bus fees. So the real drivers of their 5.5% increase is the circuit breaker, the drop in grants, and Reading. I mean, that's what's pushing this down.
Okay.
So fiscal year '26 and '27, we're seeing a 5.2% increase in payroll over the five-year period. On average, buildings and services and material supplies only went up 0.4.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
We're not done yet.
Well, yeah, you are. You've got five minutes. You're a citizen.
Okay, 70% of the budget. So basically, what I'm saying is that we have a deficit spending right now of $1.3 million. It's going to go to $1.8 next year. It's going to be over $2 million a year after that. 5.5% is too big. Can't do it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I know. That's why I told him to stop. Right on top of things. All right. Any further discussion on, hey, Dan, do you have that in writing? You, oh, you got it, Tom, in writing? Oh, okay. Thanks, just checking. Thank you. All right. Any discussion just on the motion that, you want to get up? Okay, just on Mr. Sherman's motion, which is to reduce the requested School Department budget by $500,000. That's the four corners of this, of your discussion, okay? Go ahead.
Sure. John, the tally precinct five. I'll keep it brief. For the presentation, the detail it went through, does Commissioner Lyons get maybe one minute to talk about what gets cut with that $500,000 if we lose it?
Yes, the very quick answer is with a labor-centric budget, with our increases being only in labor, labor would be cut, so it would be direct service.
Thank you.
I thought I'd be able to take a full minute.
Turn your phones off, come on. How hard can that be? Take it out of your pocket, turn off the sound. Thank you.
And can you just like take another minute and just go like a little bit more of a deep dive when you talk about labor? Because I'm a son of a teacher. You know, I didn't grow up around here, but I call it my home. Been here for about 12 years. You know, I'm from the public school in Virginia where my father taught for his entire life. Tale as old as time, cut the teacher budget. So talk about what happens.
Yeah, let me ask this question. Superintendent, have you given any consideration or thought as to what this, what this reduction would target, if you will?
So, again, in a labor-centric budget, there's only, it's only, there's only one thing to cut, and that's personnel. And so it's pretty straightforward. This idea that revolving accounts can be accessed or can create a greater offset than what we've already created is not accurate. So this is going to affect personnel. It's going to affect service to students. That's what we know at this point in time.
So for example, the teachers that pay out of their own pocket for supplies?
Or any number of instances like that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Superintendent? No, he called you Commissioner. We like to keep things precise here.
Hi, Christopher Bossy, 89 Outlook Road. And I'd like to speak against this motion to cut the school budget. I can't speak to the particulars of what would have to be cut if the $500,000 reduction were implemented. But just thinking from a statewide policy point of view, with Prop 2 and a half, the limitations on how much the budget can be increased, since you can only increase the budget so much any given year, and with inflation often being higher... since you can only increase the budget so much any given year, and with inflation often being higher than 2.5%, I feel like we ought to lock in the higher number while we can, if there's a reasonable justification for that number. Also, just as a product of Wakefield Public Schools, uh, recently, graduating in 2018, I feel a loyalty to the schools, I admit, and I would like to see them well-maintained because I saw some not-so-well-maintained things in the schools when I was there in the recent past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy Briggs, 7th Sedmond Street. Um, I'd just like to speak against the half a million dollar reduction. Um, I think that as a mother with two children in the school district, um, one of whom received some of the special services that the superintendent referenced and was able to stay in district and stay in his home school, um, I obviously worry about any staffing cuts, uh, that would be, that would happen as a result of this. And I, uh, as an educated person, I didn't really understand the second presentation, um, how, again, these revolving accounts, um, could somehow pay for the labor costs. It just, like, once again, um, didn't, didn't quite make sense to me, uh, that you could, again, essentially pay, steal from Peter to pay Paul, whatever the saying is, especially when it comes to budgets and how, I am familiar that it is true that, I'm sure those mass general laws, as the superintendent said, can only pay for certain things, and you cannot borrow from those, those accounts to pay for other things. So, again, I'll keep it short. Our, our school system does wonderful things for the children here, and to cut it by half a million dollars, I think, would be disastrous. I do not want to end up like one of these other districts with 10 days of our kids out of school because our teachers can't, you know, we can't reach a contract, so, uh, thank you very much.
Marie Ray, 25 Moncler Avenue. I too will not be supporting a reduction in the school budget, but I do want to offer a recommendation. You mentioned, uh, the decrease of Reading from 400K to 100K, and I'm assuming that that's directly related to post-academy? Whether or not it is, my recommendation is you've created a wonderful program there, and I don't think enough is being done to get the word out about that program to other towns and communities. I, who am a parent of a young adult now with special needs that went through the Wakefield Public School System, receive calls very often from families asking about post and how they would create something like that in their own community. And I say, call Wakefield and see if they'll let you tuition your son or daughter in. I think you're, you're losing an opportunity there for bringing revenue into the school district through that program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In his new, his, oh, just as a citizen.
Just as a citizen, yeah, yeah, just as a citizen. And as a former, I, I don't know if I can talk about former, I was one of the five who voted against this budget in the Finance Committee. And largely, it is a function of, I believe, we as a town and we as a finance-
You are, you are who? Could you identify?
I am, I sort of, oh, I said Doug Butler, 220 Main Street.
Thank you.
There we go. I am against this motion to reduce the school's budget by $500,000 because I feel like we, as a Finance Committee and as a School Committee, worked really hard to get a great deal of clarity delivered from schools to the Finance Committee, and this reduction was largely done just sort of as, uh, you know, not as off the side of the road of picking, it was just essentially picking a number that we didn't like and wanted to, uh, voted to reduce it by 500 grand. The, the notion that we could raid the various budgets is, is mistaken, and I think, uh, Superintendent Lyons has addressed that. I would say that as a town, one of the things that I believe before Dan was cut off, he did stress that, like, we are gonna be deficit spending this year, next year, and the following year. In all likelihood, although it may be better, our town forecast has historically been a little inaccurate in terms of we end up growing revenues a bit better than we have, uh, in the forecast. So, going back, we, we generally do a bit better than we think. So, I think that the fears of deficit spending are probably overstated, and that I think we have, we actually have the money for this budget and the next couple on the schools. We can't do what we've done for all the towns, for all the employees, every contract, but this most recent contract was just a makeup.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Brandon LaRosa, Delano Lane. So, I'm opposed to this, uh, reduction. I just want to say first and foremost, the School Committee, the Superintendent have done a phenomenal job of the school here at Wakefield. It's second to none. All of the services we have to support all the kids, I myself who have four, one in the district to next year, um, we moved here because of this community, because of the school district. And any reduction that would impact, like, the education that's given, I think is a disgrace, especially secondary to some of the other conversations we've had where some of the other departments, if we're looking for $500,000, we could have reduced it from there. But to look at reducing teachers, where some of the class sizes, all throughout, there's gonna be an increase in population, there's gonna be increased services, is just not the right thing to do at this time. And then you look at, like, all the good things of the school district. So, we have all kinds of great activities. We have science, we have mathematics. We have all of this investment going to our high schools, and again, the curriculum development, the, just all of the focus on, like, enriching the kids, all of which would go away if you start cutting teachers. And that's not, and that's best-case scenario, if the teachers themselves don't lose morale from a, from a layoff, and then you start impacting the learning, the safety, and, let's be honest here, how many people want to work in a district that's gonna start cutting teachers? So, you start losing the experience, you start losing some of the teachers that have been here, and then before you know it, you have a community that's not excelling, but you're not having that 96% graduation rate anymore because you've lost some of your stars. So, to me, I, I can't support this and ask anyone else to come up to the microphone and give their piece as well. And I do have a question. Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yeah, don't be inviting anybody, okay? Yeah, 'cause, 'cause they're here for, you know, the other one. Go ahead.
So, um, is it possible to amend a motion on the floor?
No. What happens now is, um, after these gentlemen speak, and before anyone else speaks, before Mr. Sherman speaks again, we vote on the higher number first, okay? So, we vote on, even though there's a motion, when it's a budgetary, um, motion, you vote for the higher number first. If that doesn't pass, then we vote for the, the motion reduced by the amount under Mr. Sherman's amendment. And if you doubt me, Mr. Mullen, the oracle has spoken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Charles Lowe, 15 Lawrence Street. I was just curious, for Mr. Sherman, why he's choosing to cut the budget of the school, that's 40% of the town budget, and not anything else? Like, is there something he has against the school, the teachers' learning? As an older gentleman, maybe he has an issue with younger kids. I'm just, I'm just asking, so you can answer.
Wow, wow. Okay, 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 before Dan sneaks in some more time, Mr. Vincent is moving. Anyone who, before Mr. Sherman speaks again, we have to clear the room or clear the microphone of folks who want to go first. Mr. Vincent.
I would have brought a presentation if I knew I could use that podium. Bob Vincent, 22 Flanders Lane. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the School Department, School Committee, and Finance Committee. So, how do I determine which proposed school operating budget is optimal for our children? Personally, I decided to focus on the process by which these two recommendations were developed. The School Department School Committee proposed operating budget is contained in an 86-page report dated March 12, 2024. The School Department Business Office initially began this process in January by commencing and conducting a multitude of meetings between school district leaders. Additionally, the School Department Business Office worked closely with the School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee. I note that three members of the School Committee, one of whom is a former chair and one who's a current vice chair, are assigned to the Subcommittee. Moreover, five members of the town's Finance Committee were assigned as liaisons to the School Department Budget Process, including the current FinCom Chair. The School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee met on three occasions between mid-January and mid-March 2024 to discuss the proposed budget. The FinCom Liaisons attended these meetings as well. On March 26, the School Committee recommended approval of the school operating budget. On April 11, the Superintendent of Schools and Business Office Personnel presented the proposed budget to the FinCom. There was a robust discussion concerning the budget, but no one mentioned a $500,000 reduction at that meeting. On April 17, by a vote of eight to five, the FinCom voted to recommend reducing the budget by $500,000. Most significantly to me, none of the eight FinCom members who voted to recommend the reduction served as a liaison to the School Department Budget Process. Indeed, three of the five FinCom liaisons voted against the reduction at that meeting, and the other two weren't present at that meeting. Excuse me. In conclusion, it is abundantly clear to me that the School Department/School Committee recommendation is a result of a thorough process conducted over the course of many months by the School Department Business Office, the Superintendent, the School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee, and the five FinCom members serving in their capacity as liaisons, none of whom supported the FinCom's last-minute $500,000 reduction. Accordingly, I am not supporting the FinCom's recommended reduction of $500,000. Thank you.
You're up.
Elizabeth Lowery, 86 Green Street. Um, I am, uh, a member of the, uh, staff at the Dolbear School. And I am the lowliest of low. I am a paraprofessional. I work one-on-one with one very special little boy in a class where we have seven adults and six children. And, uh, if we were to reduce this school budget by $500,000, I don't know how my program would work. It just wouldn't. Um, you, you can't cut these little guys. They could do without me. You know, the school department could do without me, but my little guy couldn't. So, I know money is money, but you gotta think with your heart sometimes.
Whoa, 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 whoa. First pep rally reminder. Does anyone else want to speak? Mr. Sh, oh, okay. No, no, no. What are you, are you, oh, you're the School Committee, okay. And you're speaking as a School Committeeman? Okay.
I don't have a presentation, though.
Good.
All right. Evening. Um, my name is Stephen Ingles. I live at 40 Richardson Street in Wakefield, and I'm the current vice chair of the Wakefield School Committee. Um, the development of this budget, uh, represents a significant investment of time and collaborative effort. District Administration has engaged in numerous meetings with school district leadership, ensuring that the budget reflects the strategic, strategic priorities for our schools, which for this year, maintain, means maintaining emphasis on current programs to meet the needs and supporting the progress made to date. The administration has also conducted a community survey to understand, um, community perceptions, expectations, and concerns related to schools and educational opportunity for all students. This has helped to align the budget with the community's vision for our schools. Additionally, several public school committee meetings and finance committee meetings were held to review the needs and obligations that this budget supports. This thoughtful process ensures that every dollar allocated is used effectively and efficiently, contributing to the enhancement of our educational system. In response to requests made by the Finance Committee last year, uh, we have taken proactive steps to provide more data and increase transparency around our budgeting process. Detailed breakdowns of allocations and expenditures have been made available, ensuring that every dollar spent is accountable and its impact measurable. Administration at every school reviewed budget requirements and asks, and made reductions to achieve overall level funding of requests. We have also agreed to draw down revolving accounts where prudent, to lessen the impact on the tax levy. We understand the importance of fiscal responsibility and are committed to making sound financial decisions that balance the needs of our schools with the economic realities of our community. These measures demonstrate our commitment to maintaining the trust and confidence of our community and the stewardship of our school budget. The complete funding of the proposed $52,319,699 from tax levy is an investment in our community's future. These funds are essential to ensuring our schools have the resources needed to provide a high-quality education for every child in our district. This budget supports vital academic programs, learning supports, and mental health programs to foster the holistic development of our students, whose post-COVID have required more support academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally to participate in their learning. It also reflects the recent contract with teachers to ensure that we are providing competitive salaries to attack, attract, and retain quality educators. In a world where education is increasingly the key to opportunity and success, full funding of this budget is not just an expenditure, but it's a strategic investment in our children, our community, and our future. This evening, I would, I would ask that you, um, deny the, the recent motion, um, made by the Finance Committee and support a fully funded school budget. Thank you.
Just for clarity, Mr. Sherman made the motion, okay? Not the Fin, you know, the Finance Committee made a recommendation, he made the motion. Thank you. Yeah, just clearing things up there. Two minutes, Mr. Sherman, as a return speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I agree with probably 99% of what all the previous speakers had just said about, uh, the budget. The problem is, there's a couple of statements that are off a bit, and it's, really is about the money. Um, one gentleman said that the school budget represents 40-some percent of the total budget. It's closer to 70% because you have to include retirement, healthcare, unemployment, workers' compensation, and retiree medical. So, all those, uh, people in the school department is closer to 70%. Mr. Butler seems to be off a little bit on his, um, comment regarding my estimates being off. The chairman, Mr. Sullivan, said, "Hey, I got some numbers from Kevin Gill, our town accountant, and said, 'We're off 114% on average.'" That's true. And, uh, Kevin is restricted by DOR requirements. Um, I'm not. So, I went back and looked at the last 10 years of my forecast versus the actual. I hadn't done that in a long time. It's an experience analysis. Actually, ways to do that. I was off by 2.6% low. So, 2.6 represents about $30,000 or so. Um, not a big deal. Uh, not at all. So, it really is about the money. When we talking about a budget of, of 70% of our total budget, and-
30 seconds.
My reduction, my motion would reduce their total increase to 4.5%, which is quite comparable to what it's been the last five years. And 5.5% I don't think is sustainable. Now, I didn't pick on the schools just because of picking on the schools. I picked on them only because they're 70% of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. All right. Anybody else want to speak on the school budget? Okay, here's the deal. Bob, what, did you just think of something?
Uh, could I ask, uh, Superintendent Lyons a few questions about the school system?
Yes, for two minutes.
Okay, uh, quickly. Um, are the, uh, schools right now, the capacity, the schools that they fall in town, is, are we fall up with all the eleme, oh, particularly the elementary schools, classrooms?
Our elementary classes are, are right at our limits.
Okay. Uh, so with all the new growth in town, are you, as concerned as I am about, um, all the, uh, when, when the, all these apartments and all these condos start filling up, and they're, they've been built all over the place, uh, what, 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 what is the plans for the schools to place these children into classrooms that we don't have?
I, I think we're just watching the numbers closely. Our, our numbers have increased in the last two years by about 120 students, Bob, so. It's something that we're just watching closely and, and kind of managing at this point. Like I said, if you heard my comments earlier, we turned away 60 students at preschool this year. That, that's, that's informative.
Yeah, 'cause we've got, uh, just in the local item, I just read this the other day. Uh, there's 3,371 in fiscal '24, and, uh, and then going into fiscal, uh, '25, it's going up, it's going up 60 students, up to 3,431 kids, you know, in the school system. And I got the expenditure, the in, in-
And I got the expenditure, the in-district expenditure per pupil is over $18,000. Is that about right?
I don't have the number with me.
Well, I do. It's right around there. It's a little over $18,000.
Thank you.
So every one of these kids that come into these condos and the apartments that are coming into town, I think Wakefield's got a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Just to reassert what, how this goes, when you have a motion like this, you vote on the higher motion first, okay? Now, that motion is that the town approve for the school budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, $52,434,699, correct? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. So we don't now, no, 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 stop, stop, please, please. Have some respect for yourself. You're a legislative body. So now, Mr. Mullen, just to clarify, we don't vote on the next motion because the higher motion passed. Okay. Now, back to this guy. Library, Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,972,883 for the library department, and provide therefore that the sum of $52,070 be appropriated by transfer to the library materials and supplies account from the library trust fund income available, and the sum of $1,920,813 be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Mr. Chines.
Second. Thank you. The request for the library is $1,972,883, a meager increase of 2% over last year's budget. But please note that the library employee contract is, employee union is not concluded in this, that's not yet settled. Stay tuned for Article 14, which I hope will be Thursday night, when we will vote on that amount. I am happy that the budget meets the required state standards and that Sunday hours are fully funded in the budget. We all enjoy a wonderful library. The recommendation for the library is $1,972,883, with $1,920,813 from tax levy and $52,070 from trust fund income.
FinCom.
Is that last one $52,000 flat?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action. Yes.
On top of the bottom line?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion under the library? There being no discussion, the motion is, the figures just as Mr. Mayo recited them. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The voc.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,558,485 from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Mr. Chines. Thank you.
Vocational schools' budget represents an increase of $306,540 over last year and is based upon the enrollment of 101 students at Northeastern Vocational School. We had 101 there last year as well. Zero students at Minuteman Regional in Lexington, and eight Ethics North Shore Regional in Danvers. But please be advised, we do not know the exact number until school starts in the fall. This amount also includes Wakefield's share of the yearly cost of the new vocational school construction, $255,711 is for the bond this year. We do expect the yearly cost for construction to increase over the next few years, as will for our high school, and have accounted for the increase in our forecasting models. The voc has adopted many cost-saving measures, including entering the GIC some time ago, and this amount we're voting tonight is contingent upon the state funding Chapter 70 and regional transportation at the currently stated levels. The requested and recommended amount is $2,558,485.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the voc? There being no discussion, the motion before you is the amount that Mr. Mayo just recited. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Unclassified.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,769,467 for unclassified portion of the budget as stated in the recommendation book, and provide that $2,210,251 be raised and appropriated from tax levy, and $559,216 be raised and appropriated from available funds.
Mr. Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chines. The recommended total for the unclassified portion of the budget is $2,769,467, an increase of $103,204 over the current year's budget. The two main reasons for this increase in this budget is the increase in the general insurance portion of the budget and Medicare portion, which is due to the factor of a higher payroll. This account pays the town's share of Medicare, 1.45% of pay for anyone hired after April 1, 1986. It is important to note also that the cable revenues continue to drop, although not by as much as we had feared, which is a result of decreasing cable franchise fees, and is more, as more turn to streaming devices and limit use of cable. This trend will continue year over year, and the town council is working on a solution with the WCAT people as to how is a community fund this vital service in upcoming budgets. And there are actually some state-level actions going on this as well. The remaining portions are level funded. The recommend portion for the unclassified portion of Article 1 is $2,769,467, with $2,201,251 from tax levy, and $559,216 from available funds.
Mr. Sullivan.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under unclassified? Motion is the numbers that Mr. Mayo just asserted. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, what are we on to now?
Benefits and administration.
Benefits and administration.
That the sum of $20,670,209 be raised and appropriated from tax levy for benefits and administration as stated in the recommendation book.
Mr. Chines, thank you.
The amount requested for benefits and administration reflects an increase of $524,914 over last year's budget, or about 2.6%. The program of benefits provided by the employees' retirement system and the group insurance budget is set by statute with the employees' contribution to the group insurance costs determined by negotiations. The appropriation for the retirement system for fiscal year 2025 is $6,756,505, reflecting an increase of $347,270, or 5.4% over last year. The appropriation is based on amortization scheduled the town initiated in fiscal year 1988 and updated every two years and is scheduled to end in fiscal 2036, and we're about 70% funded there. The workers' compensation budget request for fiscal year 2025 is increased by $14,110, but our employee injuries have been trending lower, which should result in savings in coming years. The big portion of this budget certainly is group health insurance. In January 2012, the town of Wakefield was one of four communities who were able to join the state's group insurance commission that year. This was only able to occur through the prompt action of the then Board of Selectmen in adopting the change in state law and subsequent agreement with the public employee committee and the underlying unions. Due to this change in insurance, the town has saved millions of dollars. In fact, in fiscal year 2012, our cost of insurance was over $14 million without any funding of OPEB, other post-employment benefits. In fiscal year 2025, our budget amount is 13, a little over 13 million, and this figure includes OPEB at the amount of $1 million. The movement to the GIC still continues to pay dividends, and our human resource department of Amy Forziati and Karen Dusset continued to work with our employees to enroll them in cost-effective plans for both the town and the employee. In fact, to date, the town has avoided thousands and thousands of costs and premium fees by helping employees choose less costly plans. The corresponding employees also save. This budget does contain an additional support staff person to assist with implementation of processing, payroll, health insurance, workers' compensation, unemployment items, so we can tackle a very important strategic work of human resource management, and hopefully save even more money in management of healthcare programs. We also adopted an opt-out program, and this has achieved savings resulting in an estimate of $690,000 in fees that we don't pay for health insurance in 2024. So despite an increase at the GIC of 10% on healthcare insurance, we're way ahead of the game. The recommendation for the benefits administrative portion of this Article 1 is $20,670,209.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on benefits and administration?
Hi. Don't need, I don't know if I need to introduce myself again, but Christopher Bossi, in An Outlook Road. My only question is, how come there is another $500,000 difference between the town council's request and the finance committee's recommendation in the total from tax levy and grantor?
Way down the bottom, way down the bottom there?
Yeah.
That is the, that takes into account, the finance committee was the five, they reduced 500,000 on the, on the school, so that all carries through.
Oh, okay. So that's from the earlier part of the budget?
Yeah, exactly. That's a compilation of all the numbers.
All right. Thank you. That was my only question.
Just strolling by. All right. There being no further discussion. Mr. Mayo, can you run those numbers one more time?
The recommendation of the benefits administrative portion of Article 1 is $20,670,209, all from tax levy.
All in favor? All opposed? Light Department.
That the, that the town appropriate the sum of $1,024,744 from the light operation account to the contributory retirement pension accumulation fund account, and to appropriate the sum of $1,628,489 from the light operation account to the employees' group insurance account, and to appropriate the sum of $39,700 from the light operation account to the workers' compensation insurance account, and that the balance of the receipts of the municipal gas and light department from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025 be appropriated for the use of the department for other expenditures, provided however that if the income from said department shall exceed the expenses of the department for said period of time, the use of the excess in whole or in part shall be determined by the Board of Light Commissioners. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final portion of Article 1 allows for the orderly transfer of funds from the different accounts within the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department to the town pension, group insurance, workers' comp, and retirements account, as the WMGLD employees partake in these programs and are funded not from the tax levy, but from the receipts of the WMGLD.
Any discussion? Oh, FinCom, sorry.
FinCom recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under the Light Department? Okay. Where are you? Okay.
Can you tell me what article you're on now?
Still Article 1. It's the last section of Article 1. I know it's kind of funny in the book, but traditionally, this is the last section of Article 1.
And what page is it on?
Light Department motion?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Right at the top.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we move to 17. All right, all right, all right. I, just because I, you know, this is one of the articles, and it has a companion article afterwards. Now, I never allow discussion in between the articles, but Mr. Dombrowski's citizens' petition article, it's really closely related, okay? So I will allow some of that. One thing I want to say is this, unlike when there were 13, 1400 of us in the gym, the, you know, for the school, the building, the new school, that was a fairly simple idea. Want to pay the money for the school? Don't want to pay the money for the school. You know, that was it. This is a little more complex. This is a zoning article, but it's really a simple, it's simple, okay? And the reason I say this is, you have to stay within the four corners of this discussion. And if I sort of encourage you to get back within the four, four corners, I don't want anybody to take this personally, but pay attention. This is about the zoning article. And I've read a lot, I've read an awful lot about this before we do this tonight. This is a zoning law. It's not a housing production requirement. I got no dog in this, okay, in this fight. I live on a swamp in Greenwood, wetland, sorry. So it's not like I'm doing any of this to do it. What I'm doing this for is to, to keep this orderly and stay within the four corners. And I don't want anyone, if I say no, stop you and say, no, you can't discuss this, you can't discuss this. It's not personal. Pay attention. It's zoning, okay? The MBTA has required towns to write new zoning rules, and building the housing is largely up to the market, okay? So I'm not saying do it or don't do it. What I'm saying is, when you get up tonight, you want to discuss zoning, not how many people are moving here, or what are they going to build, or what are they going to do this? It's zoning. There's no 40B element, correct, Mr. Mullen? There is no mandate to build any of this stuff, okay? It's, do we change the zoning law for this section, okay? Everybody got that? So try and keep it within there, and also, as always, keep it civilized and nothing personal. You ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Ten minutes.
Prior to that point of order, may I make a motion related to the, to the warrant article?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have it in writing?
I do, right here.
Wonderful.
So I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 17, provided that the following sections...
Excuse me, excuse me. Where's your point of order? Where are you? Oh, Mr. McCaulay, yeah, what is it?
Oh, sorry, I apologize. My name is Jim Hogan. I'm, I am the vice chairman of the Wakefield Planning Board, and I'll be presenting the warrant article tonight. I'm going to start right over again with the motion that we're making. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 17, provided that the following sections be revised to read as follows.
Can I stop right there? You haven't made a motion yet, so what are you amending?
No, this is the base warrant article.
This is the main motion.
Oh, okay, this will be the main motion.
This is, we're amending the main motion, and I can get into the reasons why.
You're amending the main motion?
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're making the main motion. Stop this amendment stuff, will you? You're confusing me. Go ahead, make the main motion.
Okay. Section 19017, parking, parking area location. Parking area shall be located to the rear or side of the principal building. Parking shall not be located between the building and any lot line adjacent to the public right of way. Driveway-serving parking areas shall conform to 19037. Section 190119, site plan review, applicability. Site plan review is required for any building with three or more, three or four dwelling units, and application for the site plan review shall be reviewed by the planning board for consistency with the purpose and intent of Chapter 190118, MC, MOD, Development Standards, and Chapter 19046, site plan review where special prior perm is not required. Section 3, timeline. Site plan review shall be commenced no later than 30 days following the submission of a complete application and should be completed expeditiously. The planning board may, when appropriate, seek input from other municipal boards or officials. The planning board shall make a final decision regarding a site plan within 90 days after the date of its public hearing. The required time limits for the public hearing and planning board action may be extended by written agreement between the applicant and the planning board. Failure of the planning board to act within said 90 days or extended time, if applicable, shall be deemed approval of the site plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chines. You're up.
Okay. So for, for, and we're, are we, we're not voting on that because we're amending it.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry. Can you?
You just made a motion.
Yes.
Okay. That's what's on the floor now.
Okay.
Do you want to make an amendment?
No. So that motion, for everyone to understand, is that the main motion that's in the warrant article, after the warrant article was submitted, we got feedback from the state related to making a couple of technical required changes in order to ensure any map that we may or may not pass will meet the state's requirements and ensure compliance with the MBTA community law. To be clear, the motion that I just made has, is not related to any maps, and it's related to technical information in nature on the base motion.
Help me out, Mr. Mullen. He's got a motion on the floor. But he's anticipating making an amendment.
I didn't hear that.
Okay. All right. So this is your motion.
Okay.
Okay. Stop talking about amendments unless you're going to make one.
Okay.
Okay. You're, okay. Go ahead. Yeah.
Rowan Delavolbi, 8 Sarah Street. I'm completely lost. I don't even know what page it was on.
Well, we're on... Well, we're on, yeah, we, we move to seventeen.
I understand that, I understand. Where, are we on Article Seventeen?
Yes, we're on Seventeen.
Okay. What did the speaker just?
He made a motion.
To?
To do what he just said. You got to pay attention, do you want him to read it again? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's, we got to pay attention now, Rowan, all along.
I have been paying attention, I'm still confused.
Tom Mullen, I'm the town council. What we have in Article Seventeen is, of course, a long set of words that basically change our zoning bylaws in a particular way. And the planning board is asking that you adopt Article Seventeen with three specific, rather small, changes which were read by the, the motion maker. One has to do with the area, the location of parking areas, another has to do with the applicability of site plan review, and the third is how long it can take to finish site plan review. So basically, the main motion before you, there's only one motion before you-
Right.
-is to adopt Article Seventeen with those three qualifications. Okay?
So I, I think that he was, I think Mr. Hogan was confused because there were changes to what he was going to, but he put, the motion that he put in is the motion, and he was misusing the word amendment.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
However, you know, we're all flipping pages here, and we'd like to follow along-
Right.
-with the amendments, or, so it's kind of hard to listen at this, and follow along at the same time.
No amendment. No. No motion was made. The motion that he just made is the main motion. You, that's the first motion that's gone in.
Okay.
What he did was, they add, they added some things. You don't have to recite what's in the article, okay? Anytime, anything, anywhere. You then, under the art, the article alerts you to what it's going to be.
Right.
Then you make a motion. This is his motion. This is his motion. And, and what they did was, as, as Mr. Mullen just said, they had to make a few adjustments to comply with the state, so there's no amendment. This is the main motion right now that he read.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. McCauley.
Scott McCauley, Thirty-two Wallin Road. So, just to clarify, so the, the, the minor changes that you're, that you're saying need to be made, weren't, weren't, shouldn't those have been vetted as part of the process early on before we came to tonight?
So, we attempted to-
Whoa, 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 hold on a second. That's a procedural question. It doesn't make any difference, it's what motion they make here now. I mean, this happens on regular kind of motions, you know, where it's not all, we don't have a packed room. So no, they don't have to. He has, the planning, planning board has the ability to make any, any motion they want right now. Okay? Right now, this is the first motion.
Okay. Because my understanding is that, that's why we had the planning board, had the meeting about this, presented this about a month ago.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're right.
To know everything.
That was, that, that kind of stuff is all done free.
To educate the public to everything that's included in this.
Understood.
So the people coming tonight, based on what was published here-
No, no, that's the article.
Would have an informed decision of what they could-
That is the article. An article merely alludes you, allu, or alerts you to what the motion will be about.
Yes.
Okay? And he's made a motion that doesn't track necessarily the warrant, or the article in the warrant, and it doesn't have to. Correct, Mr. Mullen? Thank you, yeah. I mean, what happens, Mr. McCauley, is, this happens a lot of times where a number will be changed or something, but it's not this big, hyper, crowd-producing thing. So he's well within his bounds, as is anyone under any article, to make a main motion.
Okay. I'm, I'm just saying, because this is very lengthy and very wordy.
Right, oh yeah.
So when, when he just went through that, everybody had a glazed look on their face, because this is very difficult to read as it is.
Yes, it is.
And to go through, and if there's any minor changes without having studied this extensively over a point of time, then we wouldn't know exactly what it is. And somebody's handing out information now, I guess, of what that is, so.
What, somebody's handing you what?
Somebody's handing out information to me?
Yeah.
Article Seventeen amendments?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Point of order, go ahead, Peter. Yeah, well- Yes, that's a misuse of the word. That's a misuse of the word, which is why when he started saying amendment, I was a bit flustered up here. It's not an amendment. It's, they can make any main motion they want, initially, and that's what he's done.
Okay. But they just, they just handed out this to everybody in the room. Are they entitled to do that?
Yeah.
Would I have been entitled to do that if I came tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Any handout has to be pre-approved, of course.
So was this pre-approved?
Yeah, why don't we get, why don't we get the presentation? Okay, if, if you, if people want to do a handout, they have to get in touch with me before the meeting.
And, and did they, when they just-
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Definitely, okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's get, you're ready to go.
Mr. Moderator, may I request-
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, what's that? Pardon? Do you have a point of order?
I just-
There's, he hasn't finished his presentation, so you need a point of order, not a comment on, on the motion itself. Okay, what is it?
The discussion that we're having right now isn't clear, and it, it's based upon that the planning board submitted the unapproved plan to the state without a vote from this body. The state in turn, turned around and told them, oh, you need to add these three items. That's his motion, okay? I contest that, and I'm wishing that this body votes no in that.
Mr. Mullen, will explain the legality of what has occurred. Pay attention now, everyone.
So, in, in response to the MBTA Communities Act, community, certain communities, including Wakefield, are supposed to adopt some zoning changes. And the state has invited those communities, including Wakefield, to send their draft changes before town meeting to the state to be reviewed and approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the State Attorney General. The planning board did that. That was a good, responsible thing, they were complying with the law in doing that. The state got back to the planning board and said, your changes are fine with us, we do recommend the following three minor variations. And the motion that Mr. Hogan read was to adopt Article Seventeen with those three minor variations.
And until you make your motion, nothing's on the table. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request to increase my presentation from a lot of time to twenty minutes.
Just a minute, just a minute. Is there a second? Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Whoa, 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 whoa. Is there any discussion on, at the microphone in a civil manner? Is there any discussion about allowing Mr. Hogan to increase his presentation from ten minutes to twenty minutes?
Hi, good evening. Theo Knoll, Eight Fernwood Road, Wakefield. I think this is a good use of our time, particularly because since we have two articles addressing the same topic, and it is a very detailed discussion, I think it's very important to step through this presentation. I think it will help have a very informed and thoughtful and considerate discussion. Thank you.
Just on the presentation, length of the presentation.
I don't support lengthening of the presentation. There were multiple public forums. The planning board showed an inability to listen to feedback. They're about to get some, and I think they should go through their presentation very quickly, since we have all become familiar with the contents over the last six months.
Mr. McLean.
Mike McLean, Nineteen Vermont Ave. I agree with the last speaker. It's nine twenty-eight.
Do you get to stay up till ten? Just the length of the presentation. Wait, did you already just, did you go? No, you haven't gone yet, okay. Sorry.
No.
Okay.
Bill Spalding, Forty-two Golds-
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Forty-two Gold Street. Member of the planning board. Yes, we held multiple forums. We had between forty-six and seventy people there. Twelve to fifteen people voted and spoke, not voted, but spoke. I don't think all the people in the room attended this meeting, so I would be in favor of extending the time.
Anybody else on the length of the presentation? Is that where you're heading?
Eamon Caton-Baloo, Seventy-one Forest Street. Given the confusion in the room from that brief discussion and the complexity of what we're looking at right now, I think it would be beneficial to spend a few extra minutes making sure we see the presentation and understand what's in front of us. Thank you.
Hi, Chris Hickey, Precinct Six. Regarding the length of the presentation, I'm one of the people that did not attend any of the other meetings. Could we maybe take five minutes to hear more about this, but start with why this motion is good for Wakefield?
Whoa, whoa, no. Do you want the presentation to be ten minutes or twenty minutes?
Ten.
Move along. Ten or twenty and why?
Hello, my name is Dawn Millward, Eighteen Emerald Street. I do not support a longer video and motion. You've all had the opportunity to attend the Zoom meetings, do your research. A lot of us are here for that reason tonight. I do not support the motion for a longer video.
I agree with what everyone said about the feedback from the citizens, and I do not support the full presentation. And furthermore, I would like to motion for it to be five minutes.
Not, not taking your attempt at humor as a legitimate motion, how's that? Anybody else? Okay, the motion before you is that the planning board be allowed to increase the standard ten-minute presentation to twenty minutes. All in favor? All opposed? Better do some mind editing, Mr. Hogan. Okay, you're up.
Okay. So summary, the MBTA multifamily overlay district that we're proposing is in order to comply with the state law that was passed that requires communities to have a multifamily district as of right. As of right meaning that discretionary permit is not required, this is not a zoning, this is a zoning capacity change, not a production mandate. What is zoning? Just taking a step back. Zoning is, is a tool that organ, kind of, towns use to help regulate land use and make sure that uses that are appropriate are sited next to each other and help plan for future growth. What does zoning capacity mean? Because we're going to be talking about it a decent amount during this presentation. Basically means, if you take the existing, or a lot, no matter what exists on it today, if you go up to the zoning capacity of what could theoretically be built at the absolute maximum, that is the zoning capacity that we're talking about. So in this example that's on the screen right now, an existing duplex, if you treated it as an undeveloped parcel land, so if that duplex went away for whatever reason, and went up to four, what, that's the maximum, you have four units zoning capacity, net two new add. Why are we even talking about this? The state has identified a, a need for additional housing stock across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Why? Because prices keep going up. Plain and simple. Nineteen ninety, average median household price was $167,000. Now it's around sixty, sixty-two, six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. No, we're not building enough housing. We're in the bottom ten, ten of all states in terms of the number of building permits we're issuing on a yearly basis. How's that affect Wakefield itself? We're just seeing prices keep going up and to the right. October of 2018, average prices in Wakefield per Redfin were a little over half a million dollars. Now they're up over $700,000. We're one of the most competitive housing markets in the country. What are we actually talking about? What is the state requiring? The requirements for 3A are that we create a district that would have a zoning capacity, again, capacity, not mandated production, of 1,696 units. It's got to be over a certain amount of area, it's got to have a certain density, which is very important in terms of the calculations we're talking about. It's got to be located near MBTA facilities, specifically our commuter rail stations. We've been talking about this for a very long time, that's the main, main thrust of this slide. Twenty-twenty-one is when this first came up with the state. Twenty-twenty-two is when the first time Steve Mayo presented to town council. All through twenty-twenty, the end of twenty-two through twenty-three, and into twenty-four, the planning board and a working group was convened. Thank you all the members of the working group who were on and served and volunteered your time. Talked about twenty-four. So, working group convened, created a district, recommended to the planning board, planning board voted unanimously to adopt the recommendations of the working group. Things the working group thought about. Height, we're proposing on a district that maintains height that's consistent with the existing height requirements in the town. Density, we tried to keep it as low as possible. We didn't think you guys would be supportive of the idea of us having higher density, smaller zoning districts, which is theoretically a possibility. We thought the idea of coming in and saying, you can build a ten-unit house as of right, people would kick me in the head. Neighborhood character, we tried to keep that, that density as low as possible, the height low as possible, to maintain as much of the neighborhood character that exists currently. Local control, we include site plan approval. That means the planning board has the ability to comment on specific things related to access, and there's still a local mechanism that can make sure that people can't build whatever the hell they want. Transit options, we thought that it made sense as a working group and a planning board to try to locate this as much as possible in the area that, if new housing was developed, it would allow people to use our existing assets, both the bus line and the commuter rail. Where are we actually even talking about? This district that is being proposed by the working group and the planning board is located based on our downtown. The intent is to, to keep our commercial streets commercial, so you'll notice that we hived out the lots along Albion North and Main Street. It's, the thought process is that if we are going to have a multifamily district that's required by the state, we want to locate it near our downtown businesses, so that if any new houses are built from this, those houses are going to be able to have residents that are close to our downtown businesses, and make it so we can actually have a frequency of our businesses being frequented by any new residents that may come from these housing developments. In addition, as a separate note, this is where we have a lot of multifamily housing already that exists, which is, gets in the presentation if I get to it. Housing count. So the district that's being proposed has, has a zoning capacity, again, capacity of 2,363 units. Today, in that district, 1,641 units exist. So we're talking about a roughly 700 unit difference in zoning capacity. That's not necessarily what's going to be built at the end. The number of units that's allowed as of right in this district is two in general because of the existing underlying zoning. We'd be going from two to four. Maximum number of stories is the exact same, minimum lot size is the same as our mixed-use multifamily that exists on the books today. Building height, same maximum building height, and materially the same parking spaces in terms of 1.5 for, is what's being proposed. Our existing zoning is 1.5 for one and two beds and two for threes. We kept the 1.5 because it made it so the state zoning compliance model was easier to make those calculations and make sure that we were able to achieve compliance. Reasons why the working group and the planning board came up with this proposed district. The, the, those two bodies felt that this proposed plan was a small, modest step to help address the long-term, long-term housing shortage supply in Wakefield and candidly the greater Massachusetts, eastern Massachusetts area. We wanted to locate any new housing that was going to come from this in a manner that would support our downtown local businesses and our community assets, also trying to mitigate as much as possible any new housing that would be delivered by transit, hopefully minimizing the amount of cars that are being used and anyone who comes in. And the thought process is that by making a lower-impact district, you'd make it so higher-impact developments are less financially attractive to developers. So instead of trying to make it so people have to go through a special permit and go through a more onerous review process, if you make something that's more modest in scale, easier, maybe that will make it so people will do things that are more akin to the neighborhood character. So diving, putting a pin on some of those things, the housing supply, the intent is that this would allow a qual, a diversity of housing stock for families and individuals at all stages and all income levels, and would diversify the town's housing stock, and would diversify the town's housing stock, and it'd allow people to have more options for housing in the town if you want to stay. It would support the downtown area by locating new housing near our downtown business areas. Again, locating it near transit. The intent would be that we would be locating any new housing near our existing transit assets, being the commuter rail station and the bus line along Main Street, and then again, making the lower-impact developments process easier. Want to just emphasize this. These types of houses already exist in the district that we're proposing. These are all houses that are in the district that are all multifamily housings, dwelling units at this time, today, grandfathered in, bigger and more dense than the current zoning allows if they were to be theoretically torn down and rebuilt. This is a map with just a handful, but there's a bunch more on the map. But these are all houses that are, again, exist in the district today that are, would be allowed under this zoning, but exist today. Likelihood of change. So the town actually had an outside consultant take a look at this district. So we're talking big round numbers, about 700-unit difference between what exists as existing housing stock and what the zoning capacity would be able to go up to. So of that 700, what's likely to actually be built? The consultant looked at what are the existing units on the, on the, those lots? What are the actual lots, like the physical characteristics of the lots? We still have our setback regulations that would not be changed and would not be voided by this. So you still have to have the minimum setback from the lot line, and you can't build directly on top of your neighbor's house. So based on the lot characte, the lots that exist today and then the market conditions, what's actually financially feasible for a three or a four? The consultant that we engaged, they said that of that 700 units, over the long term, so basically, you know, what you could realistically foresee in the next, you know, drag it out as long as you want, right? That 250 net new units would be the likely outcome over a 10, 20, 30-year period, being that if you think about it, a lot of these units already, all these homeowners have the ability as of right to go knock their house down and go from a one to a two-family house. But we're obviously not seeing that on a major scale. What if Wakefield doesn't comply? This is something that I want everyone to make sure that we're aware of. The state identified 17 programs that towns that are noncompliant are immediately ineligible for. Just look at the papers of what's happening in Milton. They're already starting to lose funding associated with this. Wakefield receives $3.7 million from the grants that are specifically talked about in the state. And Attorney General Campbell has filed legal action against Milton, and it sounds like it's going to against other communities that are not intending to comply with the law. In terms of Wakefield, where we stand in the process, we have to pass a compliant zoning area by the end of this year. Otherwise, we will become a noncompliant community, will lose access to those grants, and likely have legal action filed against us by the state. Frequently asked questions in terms of things that we constantly hear in terms of all these presentations. Is this a housing production mandate? It is not. It is just a zoning map that has a higher zoning capacity than what is on the books currently. Why did the working group and vis a vis the planning board pick Wakefield Station, not Greenwood Station? Basically, what it came down to is because of the way the law is written and the number of calculations you have to do, you have to make sure that you meet these minimum density thresholds. When you look at the lots that exist in Greenwood, if we use the compliance model provided by the state...
Got to wrap this up, Mr. Hogan.
Yes. Basically, we have to have six units as of right around Greenwood for the zone that we evaluated. There's other reasons why other zones that we evaluated didn't work either. Why not Foundry Street? It comes down to that density thing. If you look at Grayson Lots, we could get credit for four units, which would drive down our density way down. Didn't make sense. And then, can these units be age restricted? They cannot. You can't make it so this is senior affordable, or senior housing adult only.
Thank you. They have spoken. Okay. Any discussion?
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Don't, don't make any amendments.
Good evening. The planning board recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Just a quick history. I did a deep dive into finding out where this MBTA zoning thing actually came from. If everybody doesn't know this, you can look up, it was, the bill number was H5250. This thing came about with the former governor, Charlie Baker, put this in in 2020. And by the time it got voted on, this thing blew up from about $450 million to $226 million. And this bill was buried into that thing. It was voted on January 6, 2021, at the end of the 2019, 2020 legislation session. It passed the House 43 to 4 at 4:00 AM in the morning. It cleared the Senate 40 to 0 at also, that was, yeah, 4:15 in the morning. So the MTC, MBTA, I'm sorry, MBTA zoning section that was in this article, excuse me, in this, in this bill, it was a 200-page bill. There was only three paragraphs that were in that bill. It was in the middle of the bill, and that contained the MBTA zoning section. It was just buried in there. I don't know whether anybody ever read it, to be honest with you. So, one of the, one of the, the leading things that I keep on hearing about from the state is shortage of housing and affordable housing. Affordable housing isn't, it's not even in this law.
Doesn't have anything to do with affordable housing. Stay...
Exactly. You're right.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that reaffirmation, Bob.
We're working together here.
Yeah.
All right. So, so as far as the, even, we just went through this with Superintendent Lyons. One of the, the biggest problem with this thing, even if it was 700 units and it was over, over five years or two years, two minutes, we don't have the capacity in the school, in this town for schools. We don't have it. And the state is driving this, this train, and it's, 177 cities and towns are all in the same boat, you know? And we're not going to take it. This is ridiculous. This is absolutely crazy. They can sue us, and they probably will, but you know what? The grant money that they're going to give us doesn't come close to putting a kid at $18,000 a year through schools that we don't even own. That's, that $18,000 is going to be a bargain compared to the schools that we have to build to support this. This is absolutely ridiculous. And if you live over in those neighborhoods, you could knock down a little house, or any house, or a couple of buildings. You could build a little house with four floors, parking on the first, on the first level, on pylons. They'll have two floors above it with four apartments in there with a rooftop deck. That can all be done by right. They could build that all over the place in that, that area. And why the planning board expanded the state minimum is absolutely ridiculous. We don't want, we don't want that, and we certainly don't want the state minimum. And I'm just going to wrap it up right here. I think that, if I can find this... I'm just going to do it by memory. We're going to go way back. April 19, 1775. We had a whole bunch of people...
All right, all right. Let's, let's hurry up here. This isn't Pleasure Island.
We went, we, we, people from this area marched to Concord to protect the freedoms that we're celebrating right here, right tonight. And we need to celebrate ourselves and tell the state we're not interested in your little program. Thank you.
Okay. Whoa, 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 whoa. Enough with the pep rally. No, it's not funny. You're a legislative body. We're not, we're not going to play Winchester in a little while. Okay, let's go. Next, you're up.
Dave Hatfield.
You are?
Dave Hatfield, 23 Butter Nut Road.
Hi, Dave. Didn't see you.
Hi, Mr. Moderator.
Hey.
Did the planning board also draft a minimum compliance map?
Yes. So on the basis of the feedback we received during the public, public review process, for the public hearing process, we drafted a minimum map that, based on the recommendations of the planning board and the working group, which, bear with me, I will present.
No, he just asked if you, if you made one.
Yep.
No more presentation. Yes, they did.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to amend the main motion by substituting the words, "MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District Map, dated April 23, 2024", with the words, "MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District Map, dated January 29, 2024", which is being shown on the screen, wherever the latter words appear in Article 17.
Okay. So...
You have a copy in writing?
Yeah, yeah, this is yours, right, Dave? Okay, all right. So let me explain. Mr. Hatfield has made a motion to adopt a different plan, which apparently the planning board had anticipated. Now, this is an amendment, okay? So is there a second? Second. You want to, okay. So now, Mr. Hatfield's going to speak on, is this, is this the double-secret probation plan that we're finding out about now?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Hogan?
Um, yes, it is.
Is this, you're running the slides here? Is this it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the alternative minimum map.
Alternative minimum map. Do you know about this? Can you speak on this?
I'm aware of it, but I, I didn't produce it, so.
Okay.
I would defer to the working group or Mr. Hogan.
All right. I'm going to give you two minutes to explain this. You're on the clock.
So...
I'll take that as a question from Mr. Hatfield that you can respond to.
Yep.
Yeah. He's, he's the official from the planning board, and he was just asked a question by Mr. Hatfield. Okay, you're welcome.
So during the public hearing process, the planning board heard a number of citizens that were concerned about the size of the map that was developed by the working group and then endorsed by the planning board. On the basis of that, what we did in order to allow the public body here to have all the information of what is possible, we developed an alternative map where you can see on the screen, all the sections in red would be removed from the map that's being provided. This map ends up reducing from the 2,363 units to 18, I believe, 1805.
What's this? Excuse me. What are you doing right here?
These are the maps.
Okay, okay. All right, and these were pre-approved, right? Steve, we know about this, right? Yeah, this is the one we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So better hustle. Yeah. Can you stand up? I can't hear you. You gotta, okay. You gotta, you gotta speak up. Your point of order is what? No, no, 40B, 40B affordable housing, not affordability.
Different affordabilities.
Point of order is a procedural thing. If you have a question about, a substantive question, you got to go get in that long line up there. Okay, all right. Now, we're just on the motion. Mr. Hatfield wants to make a motion to amend, he has an amendment, to adopt a different plan. Now, can I just ask a question? Mr. Dombrowski, are you aware of this motion?
I am not.
Okay. So you don't know whether this differs, complies with your amendment, your article or your motion, do you?
Mr. Moderator, we do know in particular to that 1690s, they can see the minimum, 1805 would still be an asset sometime.
So this would be more than yours?
It would.
Yeah, you want to repeat that up there? Just, yeah, just answer that question really quickly. That's all, Ed.
So to answer, Mr. Moderator, I was not aware of this alternative map. They...
Do you know how it compares to yours? Yes or no?
I do.
Okay, good. Thank you. There you go. That's all I want to know. I didn't ask you a number. I asked you if you, no, 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 you're... Okay, you want to, you want, you got, you can speak about your, that's it. You're done. Okay. On the new motion before you, who's, who's next? Are we going to need a line monitor?
Well, we were up for one thing, and now we have another thing to talk about. Scott McGully, 32 Walden Road. When you say that "we" developed a new map, who is the "we" and when was this done?
So through the process of the public hearings, we heard loud and clear from a number of folks that...
We, meaning the board?
The planning board.
The planning board, okay.
So the planning board heard loud and clear that there was interest in an alternative map. Members of the planning board, in conjunction with town staff and in consultation with the working group, developed this alternative map.
Okay, so let me clarify. How many members of the planning board?
How many members of the planning board developed the map?
Yes.
Three of the five.
So that would be a quorum.
No. So three of the five in various conversations, back and forth, never at one time.
Would be a quorum, which is a violation of the public meeting law. Mr. Mullin?
No.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, can I have Mr. Mullin?
I get to, whoa, whoa.
Yes.
I get to direct the question to Mr. Hogan.
Sorry.
Okay.
Look, we're not going to be able to determine whether there was a violation of the open meeting law on any particular night tonight. Correct. We try, we're never going to get out of here. So I suggest we just stay on the topic.
So what you're asking us is to vote on something without knowing whether there's a violation of the law?
Assuming there were a violation of the open meeting law, it would have no effect on the proceedings tonight. There is a motion before the town meeting. Town meeting has to dispose of it one way or another. However it got here, that process may have been legal, may have been illegal. I don't know. We can sort that out later. But this meeting has a job to do, and it's unaffected by the legality or illegality of procedures proceeding tonight.
So if we vote no on this this evening, my understanding, because it's a zoning bylaw, we're not able to bring this particular one back for two years? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, your question was what?
So if we vote no on this particular article tonight?
Yeah.
So this is not able to be brought back for two years because it's a zoning bylaw? Is that correct?
No, this could be brought back within two years because this particular motion or article was endorsed by the planning board.
Okay.
Under Chapter 48, Section 5, the two-year ban applies unless the planning board recommended it.
On favor, okay. All right, great. So I, I'm saying that we should probably not vote on this at all. Home Rule 1966, 12 million people, 1.2 million people in Massachusetts voted to adopt for local towns to have loaned their own bylaws so that the state couldn't dictate to us what we could do. So the only reason the state hasn't said, "This is what you need to do and this is where it needs to go", is because every town and city has to vote themselves into this. There's many lawsuits in court right now. There's more coming up. Rockport just filed as far of a class action suit. These are coming up in October. We can revisit all this in November. There's no reason to rush into stuff like this at the last minute. It's not been properly vetted with the town. My understanding of articles as they're presented is that they're supposed to be printed verbatim? This was not printed verbatim?
That's not true. Not true.
I believe that is true.
Your motion can, does not have to track the article, the warrant article. Doesn't have to. Keep going.
So the article that was originally submitted to this does not have to be printed verbatim in this warrant? Is that what you're telling me?
No. The article, the motion he made, articles are here. They alert the people, come one, come all.
Yes.
This is the general thing we're going to talk about. You can make any kind of motion under that article as long as it's close, and I ruled his first one close. Keep going.
Okay. So this, this map here is not dated. So the map that was submitted with the initial article is not dated. The initial article that was submitted to the town was dated, was blank. That was stamped by the town clerk as being admitted without dates on it. But then, in this article, dates were added into that. So when you go to the town clerk to, to, to look at the maps, all the articles and maps aren't dated, but it says refer to maps dated. So now we're getting another map. All this stuff hasn't been properly vetted before the town, and I think it's just further confusing everybody that's here, and I think we should just vote no on this.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Christopher Bossy. Mr. Moderator, a point of confusion on my part in speaking on the motion to amend Article 17, can I speak on the merits of Article 17 itself?
No. Well, yeah, within the confines of this new motion.
Okay.
Motion to amend.
I believe the difference between Article 17 and 18 is greater than the difference between this amended version of Article 17 that is being proposed and Article 18. It seems to me that this changed Article 17 and Article 18 would be kind of duplicative of each other. So in my opinion, since the real debate seems to be between people whose vision of Wakefield is more like Article 17 as it currently stands and people whose vision of Wakefield is more like Article 18 or an amended version of Article 17, I think we should dispose of the amendment and compare Article 17 and 18 directly. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Matt Noyce, 20 Bryant Street. I am strongly opposed to the current amended map. We in Massachusetts need 200,000 new homes over the next 10 years just to stabilize housing prices. Housing prices are out of control, and everyone is getting priced out of this state. My daughter will be starting kindergarten at Dolbeere next year. I want her teachers to be able to live in this state.
What's your point of order? About what?
I will make that point right now.
He's talking about...
The way that we get at affordability is through the zoning that we see right here.
He's within the four corners. We're not talking, we're talking about the zoning change, not 40B affordability or not housing. It's, he's within it. He's within it. You're talking about the amendment, correct?
I am talking about the amendment.
Yeah.
We need broader work here. It is not enough. This map does not get us into that place where we can be a livable community for all of our residents. I want our public works people to be able to afford to live here. I want our teachers to be able to afford to live here. I want our firefighters and our police officers to be able to live here. I want our businesses to have customers. This does not do enough. This does not do enough. I urge that this map be voted down and the more, more robust map that the planning board put together to be approved. Thank you.
Yeah, his name was Nois. You didn't cut the line, did you?
No, I've been politely asking.
Okay.
Mike McLean, nineteen Fairmount Ave. For entirely opposite reasons, I oppose this motion. I had been to, I've watched every working group meeting. I was the only public participant in the meeting. I attended all the public meetings, and I forecast this. I said, "If you do this, it's not transparent." I want our government to be transparent, and you toss this up at the last minute, and I oppose this motion because I oppose any of these proposals, be it seventeen, seventeen amended, or eighteen. And I hope to get the chance to speak on those merits at some point, but for right now, I oppose this motion.
On the amendment, next up.
Bill Spalding, forty-two Gould Street, and I am a member of the planning board. I'm speaking as a resident. I'm also an architect. Thirty-five, forty years, understanding neighborhoods and developments, and what it means to me to find a village, to raise a family. Understanding, actually, Council McLean was like twenty minutes late for one of those meetings, so, just wanted to-
All right, all right, all right, enough, enough, enough.
Yeah, well, I keep records. Let's see. The, the importance of understanding the density, that this is smart development. This map, although reduced from what the planning board originally recommended, after listening to many people, not just at the meetings, but through emails to the town, and personally asking at different events, it, it was clear that for this to pass through, we needed to reduce the amount of, number of units that would be part of this. So, I am in favor of this, and I would really, really, really appreciate if you took the time to understand how important this is. Please vote in favor of this so we can move forward. Thank you.
Brown and Delavolby, eight Cyrus Street. I was not late to most of the meetings, nor was I late to the in-person information session that was offered by Erin Kokinda, who did a very nice job considering the wrath of the people attending. On the motion, this is unacceptable. This lacks transparency. As I said, I have gone to so many of the planning board meetings and the in-person info meeting. Not once was this plan brought up, even after many, many questions from the public saying, "You're not listening to us. We don't want more than the state is mandating. We want less. We want at least just the minimum." But not once did I hear the planning board, or anyone associated with the planning board, bring up this map or decreased plan. To throw this out at us, at a, on the town meeting floor when things are complex enough is unacceptable, and I don't think that we should accept this. This is, I almost feel like this is a bait and switch thing. Really.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
If you had been listening-
I'll send you all the time out.
If you had been listening, if the planning board had been listening to the people of this town, to any one of you who went to any of these meetings, this map and a less, a smaller plan would have been introduced. How disrespectful to throw it to people at the last minute when many of us have been sitting through these meetings and asking questions patiently. Please say no, this is not transparent, this is not how it should be done, and it is disrespectful to this voting body.
Hello, my name is James Milhouse of sixty-six Richardson Street. I just wanna say that I am in favor of the original plan, number seventeen. I believe that this plan, it will, is not great because it was last second, like a lot of the other commentators have said. I'm still in favor of the lart, of the seventeen, Article seventeen. I think this was a last-minute try because they were scared of a few Facebook comments at the last second. I believe that we should vote this down.
Noah Thompson, six seventy Main Street. I think something that is being fundamentally lost right now is that zoning is a government regulation, and there are many great reasons for government regulations. I mean, a lot, frankly, a lot of my job is dealing with them, right? And there's a reason we should not have an iron ore smelter across the, you know, across Farm Street from the high school. And I sympathize, you know, with all of us who are worried about ours communities changing, but what I'm also more concerned about is what community will we have? There were four single-family houses sold in Wakefield last month, per the article in the item. No matter how well we all raise our children, they can all go to Harvard and be lawyers, but if there are no houses to buy in this town, our children will not live here and buy houses and grow this community with us if we do not provide housing for them, and if we do not have houses that cost less than a medium of nine hundred thousand dollars. We have this whole, you know, inspiring debate, you know, when we first showed up here three hours ago, or at seven or whenever, about the twenty, how big of a deal it was, you know, in this individual person's life on the conservation committee, that twenty-five thousand dollars. Nine hundred thousand dollars to be a, is the entry price that we are charging to join Wakefield. I agree with the previous speakers in favor of the original map as proposed by the planning board. However, I, I think one of the definitional things about Wakefield is us coming together as a community, and I dislike the amended map, but I do want us to come together, provide for our children. And if that's what it takes, then I am willing to compromise, and I really hope that the rest of you join me in that compromise, because if doing a Milton is not on the table, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi, Michelle-
Hello. Oh, sorry. Michelle McNaul, twenty-five Park Street. So, I was not prepared to speak today, gonna talk really high level, and feel free to correct me if I've misunderstood anything, but a few things. I'm going to say and urge everyone to oppose this because-
Oppose, oppose the new motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, because honestly, it isn't clear. It's not transparent. And I, I agree with what one of the previous speakers just said, it does feel like a bait and switch. The other thing is, in listening to the additional ten minutes of the planning board and their presentation, I am left with further confusion and less clarity. And I'll tell you what I mean by that, because, you know, it started off with, "Well, we're not focusing on building per se." But then much of the discussion came with, "Okay, well, it would provide so much housing," and ba, 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 ba. Okay, so then, that's confusing to me. The other thing is, is I live in one of these multifamilies in this district that we're talking about here, and there are five adults living in the multifamily. We do not have enough parking. So then, what happens if someone now builds a four-story dwelling, there's not even enough parking for two families? That means on-street parking is going to get overflowed, and then people won't have any parking. Then, there was a slide that said about how many cars per unit, and it said one point five. I didn't know you could buy half a car. So, that to me is useless. You have people buying these homes, right? Well, oh, okay, people can walk. Realistically, how many people use walking as their main method of transportation, especially if you have two people living in the home, two adults, they usually each have a car, and honestly, if they have one car, then fantastic. But I digress. Anyways, we talk about the downtown in Wakefield, and this has been something I've been very passionate about because I've lived in this town my entire life, planned to for the rest of my life, and honestly, I remember the midsummer nights. You go downtown, we have vacant storefronts. I've had clients that have wanted to rent the spaces downtown, and I can't even get through to the landlords. There's nothing I can do. I can't even bring people in who are going to contribute to the extracurriculars in town, to be able to offset some of the, the taxes that taxpayers are now having to, you know, take on themselves. And if, and if we keep building, again, we were ready to try to cut the school budget by five hundred thousand dollars, but yet you've got all this building going on, and then, if we allow this to happen, a contractor with deep pockets comes in, gobbles up that two family, builds a four family, now what do we do with those students? And judging by this map here, it looks like they're all going to the Dolbeer. I mean, so, and I could be wrong, but like, this is what I'm confused at, this is what lacks transparency, this is what the people of Wakefield deserve to know if they're gonna put a vote out tonight. So, that's where I stand. I am totally opposed to it, and there's no change in my mind. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, next up. No, 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 no. Mr. Carney, no clapping. You-
Good evening. My name is Emily Condon, six seventy Main Street. Unfortunately, Mr. Thompson took a lot of my lines, but I hope that I can clarify because I think he made a lot of really good points, though he may have babbled a little bit. So, in consideration of whatever map, whatever zoning sizes that you choose, I encourage you to consider, would you like to grow this town? Would you like your children to have the opportunity to own a home in Wakefield in the future? Like Noah said, only four houses were sold in Wakefield last month. That's not enough to house all of the children that live in, grow in this town and love this town right now. As stated earlier, we have a ninety-six point one percent graduation rate with a ninety-three percent college acceptance rate. There are smart children who will become successful adults that grow up in this town right now. Unless we expand, we won't have any houses for them to buy, to live amongst us, with you, their parents, or enjoy the town that they grew up in, no matter how successful they are. I encourage you to just consider how much that you are willing to grow this town. Thank you.
Tom Miller, eighteen Park Avenue. I suggest we vote. I'm going to vote against-
Whoa, 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 have you been up already?
No.
Yeah, okay, all right, sorry.
No, I was up on limiting discussion.
Oh, right, okay.
Different issue.
Yeah, it's, okay.
First time.
Well, I did recognize you.
Yep.
There you go. All right.
So, I'm voting against this motion, and I encourage my fellow citizens to as well. As I mentioned earlier, I attended one of the town meetings, asked several questions. I was actually open to, to the original plan until I saw how the committee was, how the planning board and that small work group was treating the citizens and its feedback. This plan, as others have said, lacks transparency, it's a CYA kind of plan, a, the public are starting to act up, and the, and we're not gonna get what we want kind of plan. I would vote for this, except there's an even better plan that's gonna come up, that is actually the minimum. So, this exceeds the minimum requirements by my understanding. So, just for the fact that the planning board and the small work group treated people so poorly, either mind-reading or perhaps through mendacity, in character, mischaracterizing the comments that they received, I, I believe that this should be voted down so that the planning board can live with its original plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Chines, thirty-four Hopkins Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, a question for Mr. Hogan. Has this plan, this alternative plan been submitted to the state for feedback, and have we heard anything from the state in terms of the viability of this as a compliant option for the MBTA Communities Law?
This plan has been submitted to the state. It would be consistent with everything else from the plan that we submitted that the state provided feedback, except for the map size would be reduced. I believe, correct or wrong, Ms. Kokinda, that we have not heard back from the state regarding the alternative, this alternative map. I would note that one of the things that I've heard a number of people mention is related to the unit count on this map. So, the state does recommend that you include a ten percent buffer, which this map does in order to ensure compliance.
Thank you. That's really helpful, and I, I, I actually appreciate this being presented because I think it crystallizes a choice that we have to make at town meeting, which is the compliance model that we choose to select. Do we choose to go with something that is a little bit higher? And I think we've heard, you know, opinions for that, opinions against it as well, or do we want something that hews closer to the minimum? I actually appreciate this plan. I don't think that it's a bait and switch in any way. I think it crystallizes the importance of the decision that we need to make, and I, I hope that the town count, the town meeting here considers in that spirit and, and really approaches this from the standpoint of what are the merits of this versus the main motion. So, thank you for, for proposing it.
Andrew Pjanski, eleven Shady Avenue. I am in favor of the original plan here, Article seventeen. I've spent the last ten years as a researcher on commercial real estate, particularly housing. And any researcher that spends any time in that business will come to the conclusion that America's underhoused, Massachusetts is underhoused, and especially eastern Massachusetts in the area of Boston is underhoused. When we look at what happens to areas like that, we do start to see net migration go negative. We start to see people leaving the area. For me, this is, you know, part of it is about like, okay, maybe I would want my children to live here, right? But maybe home prices are, are very expensive. But for me, this is about the economic future of Massachusetts. You know, I've seen some people say, sorry, I do read the item. I've seen some people say in the item that Wakefield should divorce itself from Massachusetts. You know, Massachusetts may need more housing, but Wakefield doesn't need to participate in that. Fortunately, as a major in geographical sciences, as a undergrad, I can safely say that Wakefield is in Massachusetts. We do need to think about where, where growth is going to come from. Unfortunately, a lot of what's going on in Massachusetts is not indicative of a bright future. We're seeing, you know, a graying of the population and a lot of movement down to southern cities where, incidentally, you do have much looser zoning laws. I did wanna take that comment to, to mention a couple of things that were said about freedom. Zoning is an infringement upon freedom. So, when we see a government intervention that pulls back zoning, to me, that's saying that you are giving the homeowner, the individual, more rights. So, I do, I do disagree with the idea that the state is infringing upon Wakefield's, Wakefield's freedom. I think that Wakefield is infringing upon you, the individual homeowner's freedom. Thank you.
You, you were up on length, right?
Yes.
Okay, just checking now.
Yeah, Theonol, eight Fernwood Road, Wakefield, elected member of the planning board. I'm in favor of having a vote on this map because it is part of the extensive public process that the planning board and the working group and the town have experienced and had opportunity to vet. I think the, the discussion, to limit discussion, took away some opportunity to really reflect the nuance and the timeline that it's taken to develop all of the maps before us. The, and I think the, I, I do take exception because we listened very intently through a long process and received a lot of public comment. And the, the map is complicated, so it's an opportunity to, I think, very clearly discuss it in-town meeting, which is the right forum for this, this debate. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. John Carney, three College Park. I love people talking about wanting people to stay in Wakefield because twenty years ago, you know, people stayed in Wakefield, bought houses in Wakefield, and the children could afford it, and today they can't. It's a transit community. Hasn't been that way for a long time. I bring out a point, not out of pride or anything else, because I always welcome the new folks coming into town, but I'm the only person born and brought up in Wakefield, serving on either the school committee or the town council. And so, I, I enjoy working with these people as anybody else. But the bottom line is, there's been disinformation on this, and people don't know what's going on. They, I complimented, Council Dombrowski came up with a plan, so we have three plans we're talking about here, a new one, the revised one by the planning board, and the one Council Dombrowski came up with. There are people on Council Dombrowski's plan that don't even know they're in the district, and vice versa. We're changing these maps by just, you know, changing the color of streets, and that's wrong. I think the people out there should be notified. I think that every street that is on a plan, people on that street should get, get a letter or a telephone call or something saying, "Hey, we're affecting your community." Whether they born and brought up in Wakefield, or they moved in here ten years ago, doesn't matter to me. I think they should know what's going on, and I know that people don't all know. So, I'm boning down both, all three of these proposals tonight and getting this over with. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, move to questions.
Mr. Moderator, move the question.
No, no, well, you gotta get up. Get up. Come to the microphone.
Paul Donarco, 17...
Well, because, because he wants, it's a point of order procedure, he wants to move the question.
Paul Donarco, 17 Wiley Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question that's before the board now. We've spoken on it for a little bit too long and we still have two other motions, if I'm not mistaken, that have to get thrown on. So, my motion is to...
Is there a second to...
(inaudible).
All right. Is there any discussion about moving the question? All right. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. Let's get all our little tellers up here.
Okay.
Yes. We're voting on his amendment.
Which is?
Which is the, the amended map by the planning board. Oh, it's only majority?
Any vote on the amendment is a majority.
Oh, and then we vote on the...
And the main motion is also a majority.
Because it's not, I'm sorry, okay. But, move the questions two-thirds.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Don't, don't start, you, you, don't, you start confusing me. All right. All in, all in, what? Do you wanna speak on moving the question?
(inaudible).
Let's get, well...
After we vote on moving the question, okay?
No, no, no. Right now, we're voting to move the question.
I said that. After we vote on that.
Right.
Do we get an opportunity to still speak back on the original article? Because I think there's some points that haven't been made.
No, 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 no. What, no. What, what will happen is, we will then take a vote on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And if this passes, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, this is the motion under Article 17 right now, correct? Yeah. Okay, so...
So, there's no further discussion on 17 if we vote in favor of this?
No. Well...
This is the amendment.
No, he's amending. This is the motion.
We moved it.
This...
They moved the amendment.
Which, which is this.
The main motion.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right. So, Wayne, Wayne.
What we're doing is this.
Pay attention. Pay attention. We are now voting to move the question, okay? Meaning, do we wanna vote on Mr. Hogan's amendment to amend the motion under Article 17? All we're doing now is voting, voting to move the question, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
(inaudible).
Whoa, what, what?
(inaudible).
No, 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 no. This is a motion to vote on the amendment.
(inaudible).
This is, this is to cut off discussion.
This is to cut off discussion on the motion on the amendment. You should know that, Mr. McGrail. I'm shocked. All in favor of moving the question, raise your hand. Keep it in the air until you're sure. You have, but, oh, wait a minute. All opposed. Okay, we're moving the question. Okay, now. Now. We are now voting on the motion to amend the main motion under Article 17, correct? All...
Map. Say the map.
Okay. Wait. If you have a point of order, raise your hand and stand up.
Point of order.
What?
The amendment, that map.
This is the smaller area. It's this map, yes.
That's the one that's in the...
Yes, yes.
(inaudible).
Well, whether you want this map or not. Your point of order?
Mr. Moderator explains what a yes vote means and what a no vote on this point of order means.
A yes vote means the, the motion under 17 will now be for this amended motion in this map. A, a...
(inaudible).
Whoa, 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 whoa! This is, here's the motion, ready? Here's the motion. This is, "I move to amend the main motion by substituting the words MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District Map, dated April 23rd, 2024, for the words MBTA Community Overlay Map, dated 2 January 29th, where the latter words appear in April 17th." Now.
No.
Okay, all right. Is this your map that you're voting on now?
So, Mr. Moderator...
No, no, it's, don't, no, I'm asking him!
Mr. Moderator, would it be, would it be helpful if I say what a yes vote is versus what a no vote is?
No, no, it wouldn't. I'm asking you a question. Is the map that's up here now the map that's on your amendment?
Yes.
Yes. He just said yes.
It's not. Yes, so...
Show the other map. He said yes. Just a minute. Show the big map. No, no. Show the big map, show the little map. How hard can this be? Let me make this simple. The map. All right, all right.
May I, may I...
No, no. Quiet. Quiet.
Mr. Or, Mr. Moderator, please, I only made a motion to move the question...
And it's moved.
For a vote on this map.
No, you made a, no, you made, you made a motion to move the question on the, on the, the amendment that's before us.
Negative, Mr. Mo, no, Mr. Moderator.
You can't, you can't move a question that's not before the body. Can't. Can't.
(inaudible).
No, no.
So, the new map isn't before the...
Oh, Jesus, God. The new map is what his motion is about.
And that's what I asked for.
Right. Yes. And we're, that's what we're gonna vote on. Whether, whether they're putting up the right map or not is the planning board's issue. The motion before you is as I read it. Okay?
So, this, this, what was removed...
Do you have a, do you have a map for this motion?
Yes.
Put it up. Simple. There it is. This is the map for this motion.
Yes.
Look at, okay, all right, quiet. This is what the planning board said is the map for their motion, okay? My God. What? What's your point of order?
My, my point of order is...
Quiet!
The whole discussion, from what I understood, was whether or not the town wanted to accept the revised map with less density.
Right.
Well, that's the other map with the blocks that were removed.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking him to pu, I'm asking the planning board to put up the map that's representative of this motion. If they can't do it...
That's the original map. It's not the...
(inaudible).
Do you know which map is?
(inaudible).
All right. Try and explain this. I mean, you...
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
This map that's now being, can I have the microphone, please?
Wait, I can't hear you.
This map that's being handed out right, right now says multi-family, MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District, dated April 23rd, 2024. That, that, go back to the other map.
So, one second.
Go back to the map that you had presented.
No, 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 Mr. McQually, stop right now. Stop.
Yes. It's not.
Can you, can you explain?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I can explain this. So, what is shown on the screen right now, the blue is the same in this map and the other map. The red is only being shown, uh, that shows the difference between what the planning board recommended and this minimum map. The motion on the floor right now is to take the red out. So, a yes means that we would be voting on the minimum map, just the blue. A no means you'd be voting on the blue plus the red.
(inaudible).
No, no, no. You're just voting on the minimum map. You're voting on the minimum map. Did you just explain what the minimum map was?
The minimum...
He just explained it incorrectly. The second map, he said we're voting against it.
Stop, stop, stop. It's not a...
The minimum...
Try and explain it one more time because we're taking the vote.
The minimum map is the, only consists of the blue that's currently on the screen.
There you have it. That's the minimum map that he's voting on in this motion. Okay? Question's been moved.
Can we go to the other map now?
No. Question's been moved. This is the planning board's motion. They're explaining it. This is their explanation. The question was moved. The motion before you is, motion to amend, motion to amend, main motion under Article 17. I move to amend the motion by substituting the words MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District Map, dated April 23rd, 2024, for the words MBTA Community Multi-Family Overlay District Map, dated January 29th, wherever the words, latter words appear in 17. That's it.
The other map did not state that.
That's, that's okay. This is his motion.
I understand that.
That's okay. It's his motion.
But, the map that they presented to everybody did not read as you just read it.
Okay. This is his motion. This is what they're putting forward. If you disagree with it, vote against it.
Okay.
That's the point. Okay. All in favor of the mo, to amend the motion to include the smaller map? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So, the amendment does not pass. We are now back to the main motion, which is the bigger map, okay? Yeah, yeah. Wow. Wow. Yeah. What are you looking at? All right. Now, discussion. Discussion on the main motion. If you, you have not been up yet on the main motion, correct? Wayne Tar.
Wayne Tar, 27 Jackson Lane. I hope before everybody votes on this tonight, they'll take a close look, a close look on page 40, 49, of what the table of regulations and dimensionals are, okay? A young lady spoke earlier than me that lives in that area. I don't know how many people have driven through there. There's cars up on grass, on driveways, everything now with true family house. This is a developer's bonanza. They'll be in there buying houses, making three and four ho, homes, and if there's not enough dimensional roof, room, they'll make them in real small, in real small compartments. I heard tonight about taking the money away from the school committee. I agree. They're worried about more students. I'd like to ask both the planning board and the town council what the input was from public safety on this.
What, excuse me? What was the question? What was their vote on public safety?
I'd like to know if the town council, who voted in favor of this, and the planning board, had any input from the police and fire.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Just want to clarify, Jonathan Chines, uh, Chair of the Town Council. This did not come before the Town Council for a vote. This is a planning board proposal.
Yeah, right. It was never, yeah.
It's not part and parcel of our responsibility under the Charter.
It was never part of the, it was never part of the Town Council vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Let me repeat what I said. Did the planning board or the members of Town Council which support it talk to public safety? I mean, they are...
All right.
They are the keepers of public safety.
Well, the pla, they, the planning board members, you know, or the Town Council members did not vote on this, so, so they're, they're not inclined, they don't have to get up and say what they support or not. Planning board, did you have input from public safety on this?
The internal town staff who's worked on this with the planning board did have conversations with public safety.
In the, in the build-out of this, the total units, they had no problem in those streets. The cars are parked in the street, up on grass, on curbstones now.
Okay, well, you ask him, did they have any concerns?
You can't vote for this. It'll take, it'll take away the whole character.
Wait, wait, just a minute, just a minute. Wayne, there's a question.
Take the whole character of the name away.
Whoa, whoa! Mr. Tar, you asked a question, he's going to answer it now.
Okay.
Before you get off on a rant. Did, what, did the public sa, did public safety have input and what were, did they have any concerns?
You're the one who talked to them. Do you wanna speak to what the input was?
No.
All right. And who is this?
So, this is, uh, Aaron Kokinda, the member of the town staff who talked to public safety.
If you can bring more clarity to that, please do.
Good evening, Aaron Kokinda. I am a, moment, can I address? 43 Fairmount Ave. Hi, everyone. I did talk to public safety, both, uh, Chief Sullivan and Chief Scory, about numbers with, looking, um, to increase with there are, uh, more units, what that would look like. Uh, they also, um, Jim did go in front of the Traffic Advisory Committee, where they do sit on that board as well, and they did show them the parking numbers that's being, um, shown here, the one and a half, and there was much discussion, but from my understanding, they, uh, decided that they were comfortable with that number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, if I understand that right, Mr. Moderator, there was discussion with public safety and she included capital, capital planning or capital outlay? Why, we're gonna have to spend more money in order to do this?
No, Traffic Advisory.
More fire and more police...
Traffic advisory. Traffic advisory. Nobody said capital planning.
Yeah, Traffic Advisory Committee, um, they went, uh, Jim went in front of them on behalf of the working group to show the plan. Um, nothing about money was discussed.
None of them had any problem with this.
That's what she said.
I, I told you that...
Thank you, thank you. No, no, you answered the question.
I, I only have one, I have one more point, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, what is that?
I heard during the presentation, okay, that this is gonna be good for the downtown area, that it'll help it. That sounds like what I heard about Foundry Street. We're gonna make the, we're gonna make Albion Street a gateway to downtown. Come on. This is gonna ruin the neighborhoods. Vote against it.
Okay. Nick, yeah, what? Well, no, no, hold on, hold, that's not a point of order. If you want to say something, you have to stand in line. That's not a point of order. Hi, I want to cut the line.
Hi, Christopher Bossy, eighty-nine Outlook Road.
Wait, have you been up on the main motion yet?
Not on the main motion. No, on the amendment.
What?
On the amendment, not on the main motion.
You were never up on the main motion?
I don't believe so, no. No, because the first time I was up here, I asked about the amendment.
What?
First time I was up here, I asked if I could speak about the main motion on the amendment, and you told me no, so I stuck to the amendment.
Okay. Okay. Back to the main motion, just checking.
Hi, I'm Christopher Bossy. I've lived in Wakefield my entire life. I was the class valedictorian of the Wakefield Memorial High School, class of two thousand and eighteen. Gone to public school in Massachusetts my entire life. Got my bachelor's E M S L, about to get my master's there as well. And I am here to speak in favor of Article seventeen and of expanded by-rite zoning. Now, there are a few things I'd like to address when I talk about this. First of all, nobody can deny-
Quiet!
Thank you.
Show some respect.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Nobody can deny, who's been paying attention to the state of housing in recent years, that there is a housing crisis in America and particularly in Massachusetts and near Boston. Now, people of various political persuasions, because I've noticed that this doesn't really seem to be a partisan, polarized issue, you see Democrats and Republicans on both sides of this, is that people don't seem to understand the basic laws of supply and demand. When people are buying a lot of cereal, people grow more wheat, stuff equil- prices equilibrate, you see the same thing with oil and gasoline and the prices you see at the pump, but the supply of land is limited, so if you want the supply and demand of housing to equilibrate, you need to be able to build or be allowed to build more housing on a given piece of land. And a lot of people don't seem to understand this, or maybe even not care about it, but I do care about it. And if you're, if you're somebody who's more liberal-leaning, I think, look at the population growth numbers of the states. The blue states are shrinking and the red states are growing because the blue states don't have good, I'm about to address those who are more conservative. But as for those who are more liberal, if you are more liberal, when you see those numbers, it's not, it's mostly because of housing, because the red states have looser zoning laws than the blue states, and so people can buy houses there, even people who would rather live in blue states. Now, to those who say, oh, well, good, I'd rather be in a more conservative place, I say, on the grounds of small government, again, I believe, as the real estate consultant mentioned earlier, zoning is a restriction on human liberty, and sometimes it is justified. But, so when a higher level of government restricts a lower level of government from restricting the person, that frees the person. And so, in my opinion, a free-market conservative also ought to support more people being allowed to do with their property as they please to an extent. And people will talk about, oh, the schools are going to be overloaded. But here's the thing, this town, as we saw, the town budget is like forty percent schools, or according to some people, seventy percent. And more property means more property taxes that we can fund the schools with, and if necessary, more teachers, expansions, and stuff like that. Towns that refuse to let people in die on the vine. We're seeing this all over middle America. And just look, look at the map. The difference between Article seventeen and Article eighteen is only a few blocks. Most of the town is not implicated in that. And even if you are on that block, as one gentleman suggested, sending letters to everyone saying, this is gonna affect your neighborhood, you don't have to change your house. This isn't up. You don't have to carry your house away on balloons in order to keep it from being razed to the ground. It just means you can't tell other people what to do with their houses. And I see that as American liberty. And so, I feel constrained. I am, I am well off. I have a big job.
One minute, one minute.
Yes. I am well off.
Hey, hey! He's speaking. Whether you disagree with him or not, come on. Let's be quiet here. You got a minute.
I have a well-paying job. I'm not concerned about my ability to buy a house in the future.
Zoning, zoning, zoning.
Yes, zoning, zoning. But I believe that we need to have better, more permissive zoning laws in order to make not affordable housing like forty B, but affordable housing is in housing that ordinary people can afford to buy, a reality. And I just see people saying, oh, we can't, we should do the minimum, we shouldn't do any more than we have to do, we don't like this law. And as, as somebody who, I just feel like, as a Christian, I am constrained to follow the words of Jesus when he says, somebody asks for your cloak, give him your tunic too. Somebody asks you to walk with him one mile, walk two.
Ten seconds, ten seconds.
I want Article seventeen, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Next up.
Let's all take a deep breath. Calm down. All right. My name is James Millhouse. I live at sixty-six Richardson Street. For the past twenty years, housing prices in Massachusetts have skyrocketed, while new housing permits issued have seen a rapid decline. Restrictive zoning, little housing stock, and high demand has contributed to many families being priced out of the greater Boston area, including families who grew up in Wakefield. My wife and I bought a three-bedroom, one-bath, thirteen-square-foot home in Wakefield almost five years ago for just under four hundred thousand. Right now, it's worth almost two hundred thousand more. That would be great if I don't plan on upgrading to a bigger home in Wakefield where I need to take, where I may need to still take out a mortgage for half a million or more. So, maybe I won't even stay in Wakefield if we don't pass this. Right now, young families have limited choices for home buying. There's either the, there's either the overpriced luxury condos that I know everyone here loves, or they have to enter a bidding war, which they are most likely to lose multiple times for the few single families, families' homes that go on, go to market. We need to have more options to balance the competition for homes. This plan is a great way to introduce more modest homes that bridge the gap between the two options we only have. I understand the concerns over population increase or utilities in schools. However, this would be at the discretion of the private owner. It would be a gradual change over time. You may say Wakefield is just a drop in the bucket, but towns all over the state have already started approving their new zoning rules. Working together, towns across Massachusetts can help keep prices down and prevent the mass exodus of families out of the state. Many families that contribute to our communities and small businesses. Vote yes for more options. Vote yes for our kids and young families. Vote yes for Wakefield residents feeling priced out of the hometown they grew up in. Thank you.
Next up. Yeah, what's your point of order?
I don't think anybody else's mind is getting changed by how many people speak, so I'd like to move the vote.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on moving the question?
Mr. Moderator, Jonathan Chines, thirty-four Hopkins Street. There are a number of people up here that are still waiting to speak on the main motion who did not speak on the amendment. I, I think as a matter of respect for the folks that do have opinions to share, that I would encourage people not to move the question at this point.
Okay. Two-thirds, right, Tommy?
I agree with Mr. Chines.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on moving the question?
Yes, we need to let the people speak. You complain about not being heard at the planning board meeting, and now you don't want to talk about it. It doesn't make any sense. Let us discuss this.
Okay. All in, quiet, hey, hey, hey. All in favor of moving the question, raise your hand. All opposed? We better count this. For the disgruntled, we will count. All in favor of moving the question, raise your hand. Keep it in the air until you say, and don't count anybody that's not sitting down. Sit down. Oh, jeez. Carney's clapping and you're standing up. Keep your hand in the air if you want to move the question.
So, thirty-four in the front, right? And fifty-seven?
Thirty-four and fifty-seven.
Okay, ready for the noise now? Okay. All opposed to moving the question?
We need left.
Oh. Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you had it already.
Did you give them left?
Yeah, yeah, she got, they got them first. Wow. All right. All opposed to moving the question, raise your hand and make sure you have been counted.
Betsy, what's on that side?
What?
What was on the left?
I don't, I have no choice.
What was the count on the left?
Oh, one-twelve.
One-twelve.
Oh, it's one-twelve, nine-one, and one-forty-six.
Forty-five in the middle? We're not counting them out over there. David told them. David, you got, you got those people out there?
Thirty-seven complete.
Okay. Yeah, there they are. They're in here. They're gonna vote, they're in here. You told them, right? Yeah, okay. No. You told them, you told them they gotta pay attention. So. So, the question's moved. Yeah. Okay, what, give me the numbers, ready?
We're on to the vote.
Let me, let me just get the numbers. What are they? Bets, what are the numbers?
Three-hundred-forty-nine, yes.
Three-forty-nine, yes, to move the question?
One-hundred, no.
One-hundred, no. Questions moved. All right. Now, we are now voting on the main motion made by Mr. Hogan initially, um, under Article seventeen, okay? And it's just a simple majority. All in favor of the motion under Article seventeen, raise your hand. All opposed. Motion does not carry. Okay. Article eighteen. Mr. Dombrowski. Ten minutes. Ten minutes. Oh, somebody can make a motion if you want to.
Which one is yours now? Article eighteen, MBTA.
What? Yeah, what's your point of order? Where are you? Do you have a point of order? Or are you just stopping to chat for a while? What's your point of order?
Can we make a, a motion to move on and vote on this since seventeen already got voted down?
Can you do what? Run that by me again now? What are you saying? What are you saying? No, no, what? What's your point of order?
He can go.
I have a point of order.
What's that, Scott?
I went to the town hall today to view the map, which according to the article, it says, "See map dated March first, two thousand and twenty-four."
And this is under Article eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Ed, pay attention to this question. Pay attention to this question. It's a point of order.
There is no map that was in the folder that I saw today that's dated March first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Good. That's fine. Now, we'll just go, that's, you can bring that up. I, I don't know what your point of order is.
So, the article, the, the warrant, the official warrant that came out, that said if you have information, if you want to view the maps on file, go to the town clerk where it's on file. It says, "See map dated March first, two thousand and twenty-four." There is no map dated March first, two thousand and twenty-four. There's only one dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Who can respond to that?
So, I don't know if they're the same map. So, I don't know what it is we're voting on.
Well, okay. That's, when, when the discussion comes up, you can point that out. But we're moving forward. We have an article that has to be dealt with tonight, and he's making a motion under. There's no reason to exclude any of this.
So, can I stay here and wait?
Well, you can do whatever you want. Feel free. All right. Ten minutes, because I know brevity is not your strong suit.
Before we start, Mr. Moderator, though, I do have a sim- so, everyone understands, I have a similar motion to what was submitted prior, because the state did look at the drafts, and they offered feedback in order to be within compliance. And so, I have a motion, and so I move that the town now amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in Article eighteen, provided the following sections be revised and read as follows. Shall I read them all? So, one, section one-ninety dash one-seventeen, parking, paragraph five, parking area location. Parking area shall be located to the rear or side of the principal building. Parking shall not be located between the building and any other, and any lot line adjacent to the public right of way. Driveways serving parking areas shall conform to section one-ninety dash thirty-seven, subsection one. Number two, section one-ninety dash one-nineteen, site plan review. Paragraph one, applicability. Site plan review is required for any building with three or four dwelling units, and application for site plan review shall be reviewed by the planning board for consistency with the purpose. An intent of section one-ninety dash one-eighteen, MCMOD, development standard, and section one-ninety dash forty-six, site plan review where special permit is not required. And I have handouts if I could, just pass them along. And finally, subsection, the final change is the same. Number three, timeline. Site plan review should be commenced no later than thirty days following the submission of a complete application and should be completed expeditiously. The planning board shall, whenever appropriate, seek the input of other municipal boards or officials, and in all instances, seek input of the public. The planning board shall make a final decision regarding a site plan within ninety days after the date of its public hearing. The required time limits for a public hearing and planning board action may be extended by written agreement between the applicant and the planning board. Failure of the planning board to act within said ninety days or exten- or extend time, if applicable, shall be deemed an approval of the site plan.
Okay. Do I have a second? All right. Now, Mr. Dombrowski, could you explain in layman's terms, so that there won't be grand confusion here about what this map is? Okay? I understand the language that you have in your motion to, you know, to comply with the zoning-type talk, but could you explain what this is about?
I could, and I will. So, I am, I am before you on the citizen's petition that was, that I, I began and was signed by residents of, of our community, that addresses this issue of MBTA communities, as you've heard. Specifically, as many of you are aware, for a long time, this issue has been before the planning board. Throughout that process, there was public, public comments and public input. Throughout the process, equally, the public comment and public input was, seemed to me to be completely disregarded. I thought that was inappropriate. Based upon that, I created this, this article and the, the accompanying map. The accompanying map is what's considered a minimal compliance map. So, what that means is you, you, you are minimally compliant with the law for reasons that I'll go through here, and, and the importance of why that would matter, at least as the law is currently drafted. And I, this map, this map was presented before the planning board back on April ninth. So, as recently as within the last three weeks, I presented the minimum compliance option to the planning board. The planning board voted that down five to zero in favor of a map that adds almost seven hundred unit capacity above what the law requires. So, this map specifically, and I won't go through, and the, I have a PowerPoint here, but I'll briefly go through just some of the highlights of the comparison between what was proposed by the planning board, which again is far in excess of what the law requires and what this article will do. And so, I also just want to point out, because there was a question earlier relative to what, what the handout here, you can cross-check the handout or cross-reference it. Number one relates to page thirty-six of your booklet. Number two is, relates to page thirty-seven of your booklet. And number three relates to the bottom part of page thirty-seven in your booklet. So, that's how it tracks. I won't go into the detail about what, what an MBTA community is. Suffice it to say, Wakefield is designated as one by the state, and as such, the state is, is seeking to have us adopt certain requirements relative to our zoning. This gives you a sense of all the communities in total, there's one-hundred-and-seventy-seven across Massachusetts. As you can see, eastern Massachusetts is largely defined as an MBTA community under one of, of a few different identifiers. In our case, it, it is because we have a commuter rail, so we're considered a commuter rail community. As a, as a result, and I should preface this by saying, section three A is a lousy law. I am not here trying to advocate for the law, nor am I saying that it's, that it's appropriate as drafted. But what I'm saying is, it's what we have available to us at this point in time. So, when I call this a one-size-fits-all requirement, it's just that. There are certain requirements that, that are included in this law, one of them being a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, regardless of where that acre may fall. Another is it must be located within a, largely within a half-mile of, of public transit, which again creates a number of challenges. There are no age restrictions, and that's important because it doesn't address the issue of senior housing or, or senior affordability. This is a matter of right zoning requirement that is being forced upon all of our cities and towns. And what that means is, it's a matter, as a matter of right, a developer can come in, look at, take a parcel, and then develop up to four units on that parcel as a matter of right. So, what does that mean? It means it strips control. Municipalities have always historically had control over zoning. That's one of the very few things, actually, that we really have always been able to drive as, as a process. It strips that control from the municipality, and it has the state instead dictating, or in essence, the, the, the community, the municipality ceding control to the state to do just that. And I, I think also, most significantly from the comments before, this does not address affordability. There is not a forty B element to this at all. It is market rate, and it is driven by anyone, any developer who wants to maximize profit. So, if you're told that it's going to make Wakefield more affordable, that is false. And this notion that by Wakefield alone, over- overdeveloping our area in a small zone, suddenly we're going to solve a house, housing crisis because suddenly supply will outpace demand, that's not realistic. Nor is it proven by the fact that we have built hundreds of units around the Hou- the Foundry Street area, yet the cost of renting or buying has gone up. So, this notion that by having more supply, suddenly the demand's going to mean that prices are going to come down? That's not the reality here. The contrast between what the planning board had from day one insisted upon until just within the last forty minutes, when the, for the first time, they present this, this different plan, this is the contrast here. We to be, meeting the requirement, have to be at sixteen ninety-six unit capacity, meaning that's the capacity we need to be at. Under the planning board's model, as, as they had originally proposed it, we were at sixteen forty-one, meaning they have to add, you know, uh, three percent or fifty-five units to get us to sixteen ninety-six. The plan until about forty minutes ago had been to make it twenty-three hundred and fifty-nine capacity. Or in other words, thirty-nine percent more than is required, or six hundred and sixty-three more unit capacity than is required by law. This is a comparison of the, the, the two, uh, petition, or the, the two maps. On the left is the citizens petition that again creates the smaller zone, and thi- this zone um, ultimately comes in at about sev- seventeen forty-seven, which is, it, which is enough of a cushion above the sixteen ninety-six requirement, but gives a little bit of, uh, opportunity for us if there are some modifications that need to be made relative to how the, the zoning is interpreted. Uh, the red arrows indicate what the planning board has up until this evening tried to do in terms of adding two other zones, if you will, um, on the east side of Main Street. So what are the revisions really ultimately in this petition as compared with what's before you, um, was before you with number seventeen? We downsize. This proposal downsizes the overlay district to make it compliant with the law, but not to exceed it. It reduces, um, the minimum, again, closer to our sixteen ninety-six minimum. Um, it, it also addresses o- 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 off-street parking, which is a big issue. I, I understand, having been on the council for a number of years. The planning board sought to change it so that, across the board, no matter how many units you, how many bedrooms you had per unit, it would be one point five parking spaces. Currently, it's one point five parking spaces for one and two-bedroom units, and it's, uh, two parking spaces for three-plus bedroom units. So what I did is I modified their proposal to restore us back to what our current parking is. Eliminating, eliminating requirements for off-street parking are not going to benefit our neighborhoods. It's going to create more vehicles on our public, public ways. And if, the notion is that by restricting parking, we're suddenly going to have people operating less vehicles where we are located geographically, that's unrealistic. Um, and then finally, I, I just added some language where it said, "The planning board shall, whenever, whenever appropriate, uh, seek the input of municipal boards and officials, and in all instances, the, the input of the public." This was an important piece, and I was most, uh, disheartened by the fact that on April ninth, when I presented this, I was told by a planning board member that the idea of engaging the public with site reviews of, of these projects going forward would be quote-unquote, "onerous." I don't think public engagement and public comment is ever onerous. It's not. And, and this is not a pep rally, and I need to speak quickly.
Thank you.
So with respect to, so that, here's a side-by-side comparison. Number of units under the citizens petition, uh, achieves very close to our sixteen ninety-six as compared with the planning board's twenty-three fifty-nine. Again, the parking spaces, one point five, and then two, which is consistent with our current, um, bylaws. Uh, public input, always, not mentioned in, in the planning board's version, and municipal boards, um, you know, whenever. You hear about affordability, and for a long while, um, the, the, um, working group of, of, of the, the, the planning board was offering this as an example. This is a house in Chestnut Street. They say that, you know, well, you know what? If you can, you can develop and make bigger things on, on parcels. I, I include here, you know, two references. Uh, two of these units, one of them sold for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other one's for seven whole, sold for seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. From my perspective, neither of those is affordable housing. I don't think that that makes it more affordable, but as you can see, it creates a very, very large imposing, you know, a structure on, on a lot that it really can't support it candidly. I wanted to talk, though, about what the months ahead are, because it's important that we understand, if we don't act tonight, then what happens? There's been reference to Milton. I've, I've, I've read the filings. Um, it's going before the, the SJC, our highest court.
One minute.
That hearing won't be until October. So if we don't act tonight, then we have issues relative to, um, timing. Because our next fall, our next town meeting won't be till the fall. If we don't act on this and bring ourselves into compliance, we, we have challenges going forward. Well, what are those challenges? We have financial impacts. The law specifically says that there are four areas, the last one of which was just added about in May of twenty twenty-three, that, that say you are prohibited from getting this level of funding. There are also other, uh, thirteen other categories here that it says that if you're non-compliant, that will be taken into consideration when competing for highly competitive grants. In practical terms, by not complying, we put ourselves in a position where financially, we're looking at likely millions of dollars in, in lost grants. That's a reality. If history, especially recent history, proves itself to be true, uh, then going forward, there's going to be a lot of infrastructure work, and that will mean more taxes that we'll be paying. That's, that's really the issue here. So what I would suggest to you is, if we put this, if we agree to this, and just get this on the books, if and when the SJC decides that the law needs to be modified, or it's unconstitutional, or whatever the argument is, nothing stops us from then coming back here, reconvening,
Wrap it up.
and addressing based upon whatever the SJC determines the law a- and, and its validity. But if we don't do it, then we set ourselves up
Thank you.
for being non-compliant as of January first, and we cost ourselves a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Kathy Kane, uh, thirty-three Elm Street. A point of order. With the motion on the floor, is a motion to recess acceptable?
Okay, whoa, 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 whoa. You're making a motion to, to adjourn.
Well, to, to recess because the meeting will continue till Thursday, yes.
Uh, is there a second? Second, is there any discussion on the motion to recess right now? Yeah, sure.
Rachel, now. We've lost a number of people. It is eleven o'clock. People are very tired. We have to meet again on Thursday anyway because there are other, uh, um, warrant, there are other items on the warrant. I think it would be a more fruitful discussion if people can come to it fresh.
Any discussion on recessing the meeting?
I think there's a number of people here that still want to speak. I think there's a number of people that came out tonight specifically because this, because there was a lot of advertisement that we're going to try and move these articles up. So I think it would behoove us to go through this, even though I know it's late, but we've done this in the past, and this is a very big article, and this is going to have long-lasting financial ramifications on this town.
Okay.
I think that we should vote on this tonight.
Any other, any other speakers on recessing? All right, all in favor of recessing? All opposed? Carry on. Yeah. Um, do I need it?
Yes.
Okay, why? It's a citizens petition. Oh, okay. Planning board. Mr. Hogan, do you have any input on this one? Who's, who's gonna, who's gonna do it? Oh, okay. Come on down. Mr. Spalding. Oh, oh, so I'm, I'm mixing up my planning board members, sorry.
Thank you. The planning board does not recommend favorable action.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Mr. Sherman?
No, Ebenezer Scrooge, sixteen High Street.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't like those kids, do you?
Yeah, no. It's, it's money, man, it's money. And, and that's my question. Has anybody done any analysis as the cost-benefit of this, of any of these maps and these zoning changes?
Of this map.
This.
This map.
I'll take anything.
Well, you, no, no, no. This map.
So, I mean, my, my point is that this is clearly going to drive up expense, public safety, because we may have to add fire truck, and then there's minimum manning. We'll have to add some police, and we'll probably have to do something with schools. So we know the cost is going to go up. Um, we also know that if these new houses come in, they do a scraper, they put up a four-unit, um, we're going to get additional revenue, right? Tax, uh, et, tax receipts will go up because of new growth. And my central question is, is this going to hurt us or help us financially? And I don't think anybody has done any analysis of the, uh, financial impact. So, has somebody? Mr. Mayo?
I have not.
So, the, the final point I would make is, um, I, I encourage a, uh, positive vote on eighteen, and, um, I hope somebody does some financial analysis so we don't have to go through a Prop two and a half override. Thank you.
Marcy McCully, thirty-two Walden Road. Uh, when I, um, first looked at Wakefield, I was living in Brookline, and I really loved Brookline. I would have been, loved to have been able to live in Brookline, but unless something changed since yesterday, I still can't afford to live in Brookline, so, um, that was, you know, a long time ago. So, I, things, things change. Um, there's organic growth, and you get priced out of communities. That's not unusual. But what we're hearing tonight is that we're just starting to see the vote, um, trickle in on the additional taxes. We're starting to, we will be seeing big increases for the high school. We potentially now need some new elementary schools. We need infrastructure. We need police, firemen, potentially. Uh, there's a whole lot to unpack with this, and we're being told we should just, you know, move forward and trust that it'll all work out. Well, you, when you look at Milton and they pulled back the grant from them, uh, it, that feels to me akin to, you know, they've already given them the grant, and they pulled it back. That seems akin to me, you know, talking to my neighbor and saying, you know, I don't like what you said, so I want my lawnmower back. It, I, do we want to do business with these people? I think we want to sit back and take some more time and learn more about this because, um, there's a whole lot of expenses wrapped up in this, and it's not going to make anything more affordable. It's going to make it more expensive, and i- it's not a good time for that. So I'm going to be voting no, and thank you.
Jane McConnell, Cedar Street. Um, I'm in the zone, and, um, I'm speaking about the zone mainly. I feel that the biggest problem with all the mapping we had for the zoning is that in this small area, you want our zone to be impacted and absorb all of these extra units. And in this area, we have already been overloaded. We have condominiums and apartments that do not have parking for the amount of people that live there. So they park in the street, they park on the sidewalk. They're there during snow removal, they never get ticketed, they never get towed. We can't afford to add the number that you're talking about in this zone. I believe that the zone should be split. Doesn't need to be fifty-fifty, but some of the units should be down near the Greenwood Depot. I don't want to hear that they're not zoned and that they don't have as many multifamily homes in Greenwood. That's what an overlay's for. An overlay is to change the zone or the zone requirements. So, I'm not interested in listening to, "We have to help downtown." I agree we have to help downtown, but we can't possibly do these two large issues in one step. So we can't add the number of units into this neighborhood area. I'm not opposed to the growth in Wakefield. I'm not opposed to multifamily homes. I've lived next door to a triple-decker, which I was told we didn't have triple-deckers in Green, uh, Wakefield, but we do. I have one right next door. I've lived here thirty-eight years, and, um, almost half of my neighborhood is multifamily, which is one reason we can't absorb the number in this zone. The zone needs to be shared with Greenwood. Thank you.
Scott McCully, thirty-two Walden Road. The article is presented in the official town warrant. Is very vague. Does not have any boundaries, does not have any streets, does not have any, uh, any teat markings, does not have any addresses listed. A lot of people were confused. I held a sign on Saturday about this. I had a half dozen people come up to me. Half of them thought that all of the homes in that half-mile radius were included in this. Didn't know there was actually particular zones. And then, other people weren't even aware this is going on in town, and didn't even know we had a town meeting. None of these people in these zones were notified. I had a neighbor that wanted a curb cut to open their driveway by five feet and had to go jump through hoops and have postcards sent out to everybody within a, a three-hundred-foot radius just to move a curb cut. You're making zoning that's going to impact financially people in their homes arbitrarily, arbitrarily, because you decided that this fits a certain criteria that the state said you needed to plug into this model. It's not just you, it's the other articles. The zoning board didn't listen to anybody. They were going to get their asses handed in tonight. They came back with a smaller map. That got shot down. They got what they deserve. And Ed, I know what you were doing by bringing this forward, but we still don't need to vote for this. If you, if you have in this number that Ed has proposed, if you do the math, a two-point-four-four people per unit, which is an apartment, that point-four-four is a chil- is a child. If you do those numbers, taking away that you, 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 the number of homes you're going to be adding to that district, you're going to add probably about at least five hundred kids into this over the next however many years. They're going to the Walton and the Doyle schools. The Walton and the Doyle schools are already past capacity, and they're already screaming they don't have enough space. At eighteen thousand dollars per student, which I heard tonight, at five hundred students, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. That's just for the students. That's not, not for having to rebuild the school. We're already getting soaked for the high school that we're having to build. Our taxes are going on the roof. The whole reason that people are moving out of Massachusetts because they're getting taxed out of everything. The, if you go to U-Haul and all these other places, people are fleeing Massachusetts because of taxes. It's, this is insanity. We do not have to vote on this tonight. We can vote this down. This can come, this can't come back in November because it's a citizens petition. But the planning board can get their act together, and they say that we listened to people, but you didn't hear people. Mr. Lowry, when Mr. Dombrowski was presenting to him and said this was onerous, he said, "Well, I'm surprised that people were telling you that they wanted the minimum, because when they came to us, all we heard is that they didn't want it." If they didn't want it, why did you vote oversized? If they went into compliance to begin with, a lot of people probably wouldn't have been as pissed off as they are right now. And when you came before with that, that map tonight, reducing it, you just lost your whole crowd. Because you were told you were going to get your asses handed to you. Ed, I applaud you, but I'm not going to do this.
Yeah, hey, hey, yeah, hey.
This map is not the map that's on-
Scott, Scott, clean it up a little bit. Keep going.
This map is not the map that the article posted on the paper and the website says to look at. It says, "Reference map dated March first." There is no map at the town hall dated March first. So I don't know, because there's no boundary markings, there's street markings, if this map is identical to the map that I found that's dated March twenty-sixth. But there is no map that's dated March first at all, at town hall, which is what the article says to go look at. So when you read the article, you have no idea if this is in Greenwood, if it's on the Melrose Line, if it's North Ave. You have no idea. You have to refer to the map. When I referred to the map, it's, I couldn't find the map. So you tell me, where's the map?
One minute.
Where's the map dated March first? Do you have, do you have the files?
Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, does the cl- clerk have the map dated stamped March first?
Tom. Mr. Muller, can you answer that?
No.
Oh.
We have, we have everything that was handed in. It may have been dated March fifth, but we didn't get it until the twenty-eighth. I mean, that's a whole different ballgame.
Why don't you, why don't you, you know, why don't you-
Can you produce the map dated March first?
What, can what?
There was only one map that was filed with the article at town hall. Whatever map was filed is what is on record with the town clerk's office.
There was no map that was dated March first stamped at the town hall.
I'm not sure-
There was one other map
No question.
that was different than this that was dated March twenty-sixth.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Okay.
So we don't have the map?
No, no. They, they just, Ed just told you what map you put there. There you go.
I know what Ed told you, but I would like to see-
I only, I only created, and I only filed one map, so-
I only created, I only filed one map, so there's only one map that is on file with town clerk. Town clerk does not have multiple maps related to this article.
This is a photograph of what I'm assuming is yours.
Thirty seconds.
Because.
Thirty seconds.
It resembles yours. Would you like to verify this for me?
No, no, he's not verifying.
This is the map that I went to look to so I could educate myself in this article as I'm entitled to.
And you disagree with this, and you've made your point. It's not cross-examination. You asked your question, they told you there's one map. You've got ten seconds.
Okay. We're looking at tens of millions of dollars between all the sewer upgrades, all electricity, because all this new energy code we just got is going to apply to all of these. It's going to be over a hundred thousand dollars per four-unit building to build that's going to be more than other place.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Chines, thirty-four Hopkins Street, speaking on behalf of myself, not the town council. So, you know, there is a lot that I dislike about this particular map relative to the planning board map. One of my concerns is the fact that it does pull the zone away from downtown towards more of the residential districts on the west side, and there are a number of things that I would have done differently. With that being said, I will be voting yes because compliance with the MBTA Communities Act is not an option for our community. We stand to lose a lot of money in grant funds that will have a very real effect on quality of life in this town, and that's something that I, as a town councillor, as a leader in the town, don't want to do. And so again, while I have concerns with this map that I, I hope the planning board will look at potentially for a future town meeting, I do encourage everyone to vote yes so we can assure that we're in compliance going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Nope.
Bob McLaughlin, three seventy-six Waters Street. I actually agree with a lot of things Councilor Dombrowski spoke about in this article, but here comes the but. We have a reality check right here. We were just told our schools are completely at capacity right now. We don't have any extra schools that we can just, laying around that we can use, so if we have an influx of children, which comes with this particular MBTA zoning article, we're going to end up building some new schools. We've already got an override going on for the high school right now. Even if we wanted to build a school, I'm not even so sure we could build one. I think the, the reality here is that we just don't have the money for this. And so if we're going to lose some grant money from the state, from this grant or that grant, that doesn't, that's, that's nickels and dimes compared to what it's going to cost us to conform with this, with this MBTA zoning that was put together by a bunch of Brewer Cat, Pure Cats, and their lobbyists over at the State House, and they passed this thing in the middle of the night, and there's a hundred and seventy-seven towns that are affected here, and they're not all going along with this by a long shot. And there was that Marshfield just tanked it last week. Milton, obviously, everybody knows about that, but that lawsuit's coming in in October. I can't imagine Manchester-by-the-Sea is going to go along with this. That town's full of a bunch of rich lawyers. There's no way in the world they're going to go for this, something. I'm absolutely adamant about this. We can't afford it, and go ahead, you know, Massachusetts, be the big bully, and do what you got to do. But, you know, I would, I'm voting this whole thing down. Every single, every single map, I don't care about the maps. This is ridiculous. We can't afford it. This is stuck on, they're putting us, they want us to be Boston. That's, Boston's not even, out of the hundred and seventy-seven towns, Boston's not even included. How's that, boys and girls? This is ridiculous.
Enough. Yeah. All right. Any discussion on moving the question?
Yes, I need, I would like to discuss. I'd like to ask one question, just one question.
No, no, no. Do you have any discussion on moving the question? Yes or no?
No.
Anybody, anybody got any discussion on moving the question?
Mike McLean, nineteen Fairmount Ave. Despite all the earth-shattering points I was going to make, it's eleven twenty-three, so I'm going to go along with the motion.
You're way past your bedtime, huh? You were complaining at nine-thirty. Um, okay, move the question. All in favor? All opposed? All right. The motion before you is to adopt Mr. Dombrowski's. Citizens, yes, okay, yes. Regular old Ed's petition. With the map that he showed you to amend forty-eight. All in favor? All opposed? Ooh, okay, motion does not carry. Majority, yeah. All right. We'll count it then. We'll count it. All in favor, all in favor? Well, you're, we're moving the question. Yeah, we're moving the question. Yeah. He, he moved, he moved the question. Oh, okay. Oh, that, that one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. My, yeah, sorry, the main motion, I got my two, my two-thirds, I always get screwed up. All in favor of Mr. Dombrowski's motion? I'm sorry, that I was repeating, sorry. What's your point of order? We're voting on Mr., Mr., Mr. Regular Ed's motion, not town councillor. His regular motion, his plan, his, his plan, his plan.
We're, we're voting on Article eighteen with the adjustments that I provided in handout.
Excuse me, Ed. Whoa, 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 whoa. Does somebody, we are voting now on Mr. Dombrowski's motion, his plan, under Article eighteen. All in favor? Okay, keep them up, you might as well count them. Let's get this right. Before there's more raucousness. Sorry, I got, I got lost there. It's way past my bedtime. Actually, it's not. Who's this guy? Who's this guy? Yeah. Hold that guy. Okay. Mr. Watts? Mr. Watts? Sorry, 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 sorry.
Seventy-eight in the center.
We all set? Now we go with the goes? All opposed?
I mean, it's, it's going to pass, but it's a simple majority, right?
Yeah, simple majority.
One hundred two in the center.
What do you got? Went down? What's the numbers?
Two thirty to two oh seven. No.
Okay. The yes votes are how many?
Yes votes are two oh seven.
Yes votes are two oh seven. No votes? Two thirty. Okay. All right. Somebody's got to make it.
Mr. Moderator, make a motion to continue town meeting until Thursday, May second, at seven PM.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Oh my God. Oh.